I think we're all present and correct. Item number one, apologies for absence. Chief Executive will read out the list.
Thank you Chairman. The apologies for absence are councillor Tom Ashton, councillor Lindsay Corey, councillor Alexander Mohan and councillor Carl Macy. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say, are there any further apologies?
Sorry, we understand that councillor Paul Cooper might not be able to make it as well.
I also believe that councillor, is it Mrs Austin, will be probably late. Okay, item number two, oh sorry, Sarah.
I have apologies from councillor Cullen.
That will also be noted. Thank you. Item number two, declarations of councillors' interest. We've had legal advice and the motion regarding pensions, item number 13, it is not necessary for any of us to make a declaration because we deem it is not necessary either for you or any partner that may be receiving or about to receive a pension. So that is item number 13, the motion. Thank you. Item number three, minutes of the county council held on the 11th of May, that the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 11th of May 2018 be approved as a correct record and signed by me after this meeting. Has anybody got any issues with those meeting minutes? If so, I'll accept that it's okay. Quick show of hands, everybody agreed? Thank you very much, I'll sign, he was at the end. Thank you very much indeed. Item number four, my Chairman's announcements. I hope you have all enjoyed the summer break and have returned refreshed. My civic engagements since the last council meeting have been varied and given me the opportunity to continue visiting places throughout our lovely county of Lincolnshire. I thank Diane for supporting me on these engagements and also the Vice-Chairman Lady, councillor Tony Bridges and Tina Wright for representing us at civic functions when we have been unable to attend due to other commitments. We are pleased to take part in the Two Days of Lincolnshire Show which attracted many visitors from far and wide. It gave me the opportunity to make money of our residents, including the wonderful individuals who are winners of the Good Citizens Award. I was delighted to host the county service of dedication in Lincoln Cathedral. It was a wonderful service and we're honoured that the visiting choir of the church of the epitome of, from Washington DC, gave their time to perform at this service. It was truly a memorable occasion. Today is the last council meeting for our executive director and economy, Richard Wills, before he retires after nearly two decades of valuable service to this authority. I'm sure you will be joining me in thanking Richard for his contribution over the last 18 years and wishing him a long and happy retirement. And we're going to have a meeting after, in the foyer, to celebrate that and have a last farewell word with him. So thank you, Richard. On a sad note, I have to announce that many of us probably know that councillor Marion Brighton, OBE, passed away only a few weeks ago. Not a Lincolnshire County councillor but a North Kesteven councillor for a staggering 44 years, exactly half of her life. And I was also privileged to be a fellow councillor in the ward of Hainton and Washenborough. She'll be sadly missed and I will ask councillor Hill to make a statement after my announcements on behalf of the whole county for Mrs Brighton. You'll also notice that today I have both a left and right hand man, new, and my first is obviously my new chaplain. And I'm very pleased to welcome Canon John Patrick. We go back a few years, right back to 2000, I nearly said 1900 and somewhere then, 2003, when he was vicar of St Denny's and obviously associated with the district council there. During my term of chairman there, 2008, he moved up the, I was going to say the political ladder, but not quite the political ladder, but he became a rural dean. 2009, became canon of Lincoln. And 2012, took his residence up there at the cathedral and of course he's still there today. And I wish him the best of luck. That will keep carrying on and I thank him again for being my chaplain. He will have to nip off very soon, I've been told, he's got to be presented with about a £12 million cheque, so he's got to, he's got to show willing and say thank you. So he will be leaving us very shortly. Thank you very much indeed. And to my left, welcoming Keith Ireland on his first of many council meetings. Keith started, if I've got my notes, back in the 26th of September 1983, where he started as a clerical assistant, moving up to corporate directors 2005, homes and daycare, and joining Wolverhampton 2012, before finally becoming the managing director back in 2014. And is there until he joined us on the 1st of July. So again, welcome Keith and first of many. Okay. Right, on to item number five, statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Statements by the members of the executive are detailed as report reference number five in the agenda previously circulated. Are there any other announcements? I'll call on councillor Martin Hill.
Yes, thank you. Just to, you did indicate Chairman, that a few words will be said for councillor Mrs Brighton and for our esteemed director, retiring director. I'll just start and say a few words about Marion Brighton, who obviously was, fair to say, a colossus of local government within Lincolnshire, although she was never a member of this council. She was a founder member of North Kesteven District Council. I think it's fair to say that in fairly quick time, she knew everything that ever went on in North Kesteven District Council, led it very effectively and indeed has long been recognised as probably not only one of the best district councils in Lincolnshire, also a very high reputation nationally. She was a very formidable lady and indeed, although there were good relations with the county council, she was not slow at giving her opinion to about issues of the county council, indeed anybody, any other public service that she cared to mention. So you said, she believed passionately in local government, she believed passionately in Lincolnshire and she was a formidable campaigner and fighter for Lincolnshire. And certainly when out of the county boundaries, she was quite a force to be reckoned with in actually banging the drum for our great county. And although she was not slow to voice her opinion, she felt the county council wasn't quite doing what she would have expected. I have to say, I had a good relationship with her, personal relationship, as indeed all the leaders, I think, of this council had in that time. And she was one person you could actually ring up and many times I used to ring her up or she'd ring me, we'd have a conversation about some difference or about some issue. And it was amazing, always, always, at the end of the conversation, she would then, we'd agree that whatever it was were the interests of the whole county and she would agree with it and we'd come to a sensible compromise. So she was councillor for North Kesteven in a sense, as leader, and she was a long time leader as well, she was of her, she was half her life a councillor and also for many, many years leader as well. So a good champion for this, for her district, but also for the whole county as well. And she will be well, a long time remembered for what she did. I'll sit down now and let others talk about the other matter and come back to our Director of Economy and Place, I don't know what you are, Richard, whatever it is.
Councillor Hill, right. Shall we move on to item number five now? Oh, sorry. Oh yes, sorry. Councillor Newton, sorry, I missed you on here.
Thank you Chairman. I'd just like the opportunity on behalf of our group to say thank you very much to Richard for the service he's given this county and the service he's given us individual members and our group. His advice has always been good and at least I think it has. We've done everything we've been told every time. But he's done it in such a way that even if you didn't agree with what you're being told, you accepted it. And I think what I shall miss most will be the lighthearted, jocular way in the way that things have been put over to us. So thank you very much for all you've done for us and our council and Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you. I have now councillor Marion Overton.
Very much Chairman. I would also like to say a very big thank you to Richard Wills, our officer. I think it was one of my first meetings where I was allowed into the inner parts, if you like, with inner sanctum being a group leader at the time. And it was Richard's first dinner as well. And I think we had an opportunity to, you talked a lot about Cornwall and your love for the rural environment, which I think was so important and a useful link to Lincolnshire and has paid such good dividends in your service here. And the other aspect that really shone through for me throughout the period of office has been a sense of integrity and a really positive ethos with good humour, which has, I think, engendered a change. At the time, it was a difficult, we have gone through some difficult times as councillors, you know, and it was Richard who led that programme to bring those improvements forward. So a very big thank you.
Thank you councillor Overton. And we have councillor Robert Parker. Councillor Parker.
Well, Richard came in 2000 and when we think about it, 2000 is a really long time ago, it's not just 18 years, but the council and Lincolnshire has changed and so has Richard. I mean, when I mention names like Jim Speechley and David Bowles in 2000, one was the leader of the council, who we will never forget, and the other was David Bowles, who was an excellent chief executive. And that tells you something about the time. If we think back to 2000, we think of sort of issues like the university only been around four years and in that intervening time, Richard has become a board member of the business improvement group of the university. The LEAP didn't exist, Lincolnshire Enterprise Partnership didn't exist, and Richard's an executive member of that. During the time that Richard's been here, what started off as director of highways has suddenly become executive director for environment and economy and monitoring officer and for a short time acting head of paid service. So from humble beginnings as a director of highways and potholes, it's suddenly taken over virtually the county council. I'd agree with the people that have spoken, Angela and Marion, about integrity, lightheartedness. I think one of the things as an opposition group is the way that Richard has made it clear to everybody that he's worked for, that officers are here to serve the full and whole council rather than only the administration and for that we're forever grateful. Being a source of knowledge and help and support to me as leader of the opposition and also as Chair of the OBE and Scruciny Management Board, always there with advice, guidance and a warmth that goes beyond being what we might call a public servant or a civil servant, always there to help and guide. And I think it's fair to say that we wish Richard and his wife Jane a long and happy retirement with our thanks for everything that he's done for us.
Thank you councillor Parker. And we have councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Hill.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, as councillor Parker stated, Richard joined us at the turn of the century and in many ways, the 20th, the 21st century, but not the other. And he came from Cornwall, so obviously had an experience of rural thing. And as councillor Parker said, he was very much on a narrow remit of highways and planning because he was brought in specifically to deal with tarmac really. And his predecessor had obviously, in the views of some, not looked after tarmac well enough, but he went on to actually work in number 10 Downing Street, so it didn't do him any harm at all. So at the time, I remember, I think councillor Parker was on the appointments, I was actually on the appointments committee, and Richard was very keen at the time to stress that there was more to his briefcase than just highways and planning, economic development, he'd had a good experience of that. So he did start out just doing highways and planning, that then expanded and I think because, to stop me getting bored, we gave him all sorts of things to do, monitoring officer, he's probably had the fire service several times, I think, and indeed, as Rob Parker has said, head of paid service for a period as well. He's had all sorts of roles and responsibilities and he's very much become part of the fixture of the officer corps of this council. I think the proof of the pudding is in the eating and actually look at the record which is done, and he was correct, he did have a remit in economic development and we've been very successful in delivering economic development for our county, considering we are, you know, one of the more rural counties in the country. The LEAP, the Greater Lincolnshire, Greater Lincolnshire LEAP has been very successful, very much due in part to Richard's very careful and collegiate way of running things. He was nationally recognised for, as an expert in flooding and certainly after the Boston floods, he was very instrumental in going down to London and explaining and explaining to government and others, Environment Agency in particular, how it could be done better. He improved the relationships locally with the Environment Agency here, out of all recognition, so now we have a sensible relationship with them, so we can work together. In terms of, he's also, you know, knowledgeable on waste and also was president of Adept, which is the sort of national body which looks after sort of highways and stuff like that. He was president of Adept for a year, which again was, I think he was very successful at. So I think he has done a marvellous job for us over the years and as has been said, he's done it as a really good person who genuinely believes in public service. He is very loyal to this county, he's very loyal to this council and he's been very loyal to his staff as well. So I think there will be a big hole when he finally leaves in a few, in less than a fortnight now, and I wish him well in his future career as chief babysitter for the Wills clan.
Thank you councillor Hill. And I would just like to add my thanks to Richard because what has not been mentioned, he held the fort for a few months here, stepping in as chief executive and of course keeping me on straight and narrow at his one and only council meeting. So thank you, Richard, and again, happy retirement and I say we'll have a good chinwag all of us after this meeting in the foyer. Thank you. Right, I'll try not to get in front of myself again, so we'll move on to item number five now, which is statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive. As you say, statements by the members of the executive are detailed as report reference number five in this agenda, which has been previously circulated. Are there any other, any other announcements?
Thank you for the opportunity here. As many of you will know, there was a major incident declared overnight with a fire at the mid UK recycling plant. 12 fire engines attended this, along with a couple of support vehicles at around 2 o'clock this morning. And due to their efficiency, speed and expertise, particularly in putting out in a fire break at a very earliest opportunity, which is no mean achievement, knowing where they have to draw the water from considerable distance from the leisure park across the road, this was considerable feat and they managed to contain that fire within two sheds. Those fires are still ongoing and probably will be for a little while, but it is well under control now. The fire started on a conveyor belt, but obviously as time goes on, we'll find more about the details of that. Obviously, it helps in some perverse way in that there have been two former incidents at this site, but that did give the fire crews probably a bit of prior knowledge, there's been a lot of emergency planning going into that site in the event of a major incident and that has clearly paid off today. There is a considerable plume of smoke, but I should say this is white smoke, not black smoke as we've had in the past. It is non-toxic and they will be working with both the Environment Agency and Public Health just to ensure that they do any tests around those smoke plumes going out. Members of the public who live nearby are being advised to keep their windows closed and doors closed. At the moment, it is now being scaled down, so we're around to about seven or eight fire engines there at the moment and it is thought by about midday, that'll probably be, go down to about four. But be aware that plume of smoke will be around for another two or three days at least and they will continue to be pumping large amounts of water on there to make sure that it is fully extinguished. So really, I'd just like to take the opportunity and thank those 60 odd firefighters that attended that scene last night for the considerable expertise, effort and believe me, when you're moving water over such a long distance and having to move hoses over such a long distance, that is a really tiring thing to do. Extreme heat as well, so I'd like this full council to acknowledge and thank those 60 firefighters for the excellent response that they did last night. That could have been a really serious fire, it was serious enough as it was, but that could have been a lot worse if without their efforts, so thank you to them. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you councillor Worth for that update and it's nice to know that we've got an excellent fire service here in the county that can respond as quickly as they do and I think we should praise them quite wholeheartedly. Questions. I'm anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I intend to allow 45 minutes for questions. I'm expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. Would councillors wishing to speak, ask questions, please indicate by pressing the button on their console to join the queue. Your name will then appear on my screen. Don't forget that once you've joined the queue, you do not need to press the button when I invite you to speak or when you sit down. Right, we've got our first list coming up and I will start with councillor Julie Keely. Thank you.
Councillors, my question concerns the financial position of the council. Given that the council has had a budget surplus and underspend of £27 million, I wondered how that squared with the fairer funding campaign for Lincolnshire? Because surely central government would interpret our underspend as managing, so my question is to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you for the question. Well, for some time now, the council has had a policy in financial terms of actually planning for the future, because we've known all along, since 2011, when the coalition government came in, that funding for local government was going to reduce and that trajectory of reduction of funding continues. At the same time, demand has been increasing, particularly for adult care and now children's safeguarding as well. So we know that there is a financial black hole approaching. We also know the government has, we've set, the government has set its plans up to 2020s because it's got a financial plan for that period and we are matching that. And for example, the executive earlier this month, we had a very sobering report from our own Glenn Garrard, who is currently chairman of ADAS, the National Adult Care Directors Group, if you like, that there is a big problem approaching. We're also aware that the government has committed £20 billion to the NHS over the next five years and they have not made clear yet where that money will come from, because it's not been identified. But I think it's safe to say that will mean that there will be little money left for anybody else because they will have to find the money for that commitment. So this is all adding up to a very uncertain time and our plans are very clear, we have some reserves which are being used up over the years and that is the right and sensible thing to do. And although the figures quoted do sound big in terms of our budget, which is probably over £500, £600 million, it is not huge. So I think the clear advice, and we had this debate at the full council budget meeting, clear advice is that we ought to just be prudent, we do not want to be, and I strongly advise, we do not want to be in a position that, let's say, Northamptonshire County Council find themselves in, do not want to be anywhere near that. And the good news is, obviously the fairer funding campaign is going on and we are talking about long-term future funding, because although we use reserves, they can only be used once and the strategy is to take some time, rather than make rapid slashing cuts, actually have a progress of getting our budget down to a reasonable level. I've had meetings with the previous Secretary of State, Sajid Javid, about the fairer funding and I have to say, I had a, we had a sympathetic hearing with our MPs and he was quite clear. He understood about the reserves, but he did say he knew that this council, unlike some other councils, he felt, had done all the right things in finding the savings necessary. So the strategy is that eventually those reserves will run out in a few years' time, then we will have to get our budget down to the new level. And obviously if the fair funding campaign is successful, if the government comes up with a plan how it's going to fund adult care, because there's a green paper on that which will be coming out either just before or probably might be after Christmas, we now learn, if things improve, obviously that will be a different matter. But I strongly advise that we need to be prudent. There is lists now of councils which are nationally known as being in financial difficulties and that means you have to make some very unpleasant decisions. And if we were sitting in Northamptonshire at a similar meeting, we would now be discussing some pretty gruesome decisions, for example, just slashing the highways budget, for example, and things like that. So I don't think that argument about having reserves actually is relevant to the fair funding campaign, it is part of it and everybody knows it is a strategy which we need to see through and make sure that we don't actually end up having to make difficult decisions before we have to.
Thank you councillor Hill. My next question is from councillor Brewis, again to councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Brewis.
Thank you Chairman. Martin, you may well recall my asking a question of Mr Cable at the LGA conference on the same subject, the concentration of government financial support on London and cities to the severe detriment of rural shires. I asked for his views. He responded by saying that cities had more rough sleepers. Now, I don't think he was referring to the supports for the rail infrastructure. What is your opinion of his response, which I believe you yourself heard?
Well, of course, Vince Cable is a London MP, so he probably realised that he ought to be careful, because he started off in great guns, saying that this all needs to be fair and it is clearly, and he was quite critical of the current funding system, and he knows quite a bit about it, of course, and he was very convincing, but then at the end, I think he suddenly realised somebody from Twickenham, I think, it's not Twickenham, it's wherever it is in South West London, might be listening, so he then said, well, there's more rough sleepers. I think the big argument about this fair funding and having a fair system is that certain areas say that they've got more deprivation than we have, certain areas say they've got more things like rough sleepers. I don't think that's actually true. I'm not sure per head of population, for example, we know that that's true, because we know in Lincoln, for example, there is a particular issue with rough sleepers and people who are comatose in doorways, for example. So I think the whole argument is that it isn't fair and people who fear they might lose out under a new system, and I have to say, the mood music coming from government and from the local government minister, Rishi Sunak, is very positive, but there are some who think they may lose out and they're coming up with reasons why it should be so and the deprivation is usually it, but those people who represent the East Coast, for example, would say, well, there's plenty of deprivation in Lincolnshire. Those of us who represent, well, represent any area, villages or other, we all know there is a hidden deprivation, if you like, there are many people who have issues and probably too proud to say so. So the argument goes on and I think he was supportive, but probably just had a bit of a local interest which he had to take account of.
Thank you councillor Hill. My next question is from councillor Bob Adams to councillor Colin Davy. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Having had the benefit of serving on the Lincolnshire Enterprise Partnership for some two years and seeing the benefit of that close collaboration and working between the public and the private sector, it is concerning that the government is currently looking and consulting on the future structure of the enterprise partnerships, their board makeup and overlaps. Could councillor Davy give his thoughts on this consultation and what he Could councillor Davy give his thoughts on this consultation and what he sees as the possible way forward?
Firstly, thank you, councillor Adams, for the question. As you know, the government is conducting a nationwide review of the LEPs based on problems that have arisen in other parts of the country, and it's also about ensuring, of course, that LEPs are able to manage government grants effectively. It's important to remember, of course, that government assesses each LEP's performance every year, and beyond recommendations about increasing the balance of underrepresented groups in Lincolnshire, the board of the Greater Lincolnshire LEP has always been given an absolute clean bill of health. Councillor Adams is also correct in saying that the LEP delivers well for our county. He's been a member of it. I'd go a step further. I would say that the LEP delivers well for every part of our county. And as part of my thinking around this, I will be writing to every member of the council in the next few days with a breakdown of LEP LCC funding, because it's gone into each area, district by district, so you can see how the LEP is working across the wider county economy. We're currently running, as a LEP board, a new open and transparent process. The previous process was open and transparent, but we are looking to recruit new board members to help address the challenge the government has set in rebalancing the membership of the board. But I would say it's important to make sure that we have successful business leaders on the board, and that should be shaped by that requirement rather than anything else. The review has asked each LEP to explore overlaps that they have with other areas and to eradicate those overlaps. Personally, I am very uncomfortable with that request from government for two reasons. Firstly, the Greater Lincolnshire LEP team, both at board and staff level, works very closely with the Humber LEP, where we have an overlap, and there are no problems associated at all with that relationship. And secondly, the LEP and its board has always held the philosophy that its borders should be permeable. Borders are administrative things, as you know. Business goes where business needs to be, and we should always remember that. We will be stating to government that Greater Lincolnshire works as an economic area. Businesses tell us that it works for them too. Therefore, we will be making our representation to government that the Greater Lincolnshire LEP boundaries should not be altered and remain the same. Of course, we have to win that argument, and if we are unable to win that argument with government, then it is important that we support a LEP geography that enables us to promote Lincolnshire's needs as effectively as possible, and at a scale that government is going to listen to and act upon in the future. Thank you, councillor Adams.
Thank you, councillor Davy. My next speaker will be councillor Colin Matthews, again to councillor Colin Davy. Councillor Matthews.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Davy. I want to ask you a question. It's in the context of two local people who are in my ward, both female. Claire has just completed her GCE A-levels. She has got three A-star A-levels. She's been offered a place in Oxford. She is going to go and train as a doctor. It is fantastic news for her. I'd like to congratulate her. I'd like to congratulate everybody in Lincolnshire who has passed, succeeded in their GCSEs and in their GCSEs. We're doing a very good job there. Another record-breaking year. The second person is Lucy. Lucy is going to be taking her GCSEs this year. She is not minded at this stage to progress to take A-levels. She is minded to stay working within the local economy and would like to take up an apprenticeship and follow a skills course. She is unclear that there is a good offer available to her. I am unclear whether there is a good offer available to her. We hear a great deal about school performance tables. We haven't been hearing so much about skills performance tables. I just want to know if Claire and Lucy are going to have the same equality of opportunity. We can't keep hemorrhaging bright students out of the county because they don't come back.
Thank you, councillor Matthews, for your question, and may I first pass on my congratulations to everyone this year who has passed exams at whatever level across our amazing county. I'd also like to especially pass on congratulations to all of the students who have gained HNDs, BTECs or other vocational qualifications through the county's further education colleges and our independent training providers. You're, of course, right that as a society, we don't speak enough about the success of students who pursue vocational skills. That's something I know that the Employment and Skills Board wants to put right in the future, and it's something I hope we can all support here in this council. Turning to your specific areas, statistics show that the number of young people who leave Lincolnshire to study and do not return is actually no greater than any other part of the country. But it doesn't really matter. What is really important, we do not hemorrhage talented people out of our county, and we try and retain them for our future, because they are the future. You'll remember, of course, the University of Lincoln's bid for a medical school was successful earlier this year. All members of this executive board signed a letter of support, and our officers continue to work with the university to bring that project to fruition. This is going to help the next generation of Claires, not just to study locally with courses due to start in the next eighteen months, but then work in Lincolnshire in the future. Also, of course, well done to Lucy, who, as you say, has chosen a vocational route. Our colleague, Alexander Moore, if he was here today, would no doubt have some tips for her. I would say also, there's a promising future for all of our further education colleges in our county. Lincoln College was recently judged good by Osted, and I've been very impressed as I've gone around the county, meeting people, to see the range of provision across other colleges and providers across the whole of Lincolnshire. So I'm sure Lucy's going to be entering a system that's going to serve her very well. We do need to do much more to help people to understand opportunities that are available to them in this county, and opportunities to help them build a career here in Lincolnshire, and to help them understand the opportunity of training for those careers. We have worked with the Greater Lincolnshire LEP to target thirteen million pounds of funding into skills, employment and promotional schemes. We're training at the moment around eight thousand people. We have advisors who are helping schools to build relationships with local businesses, and we're helping business representatives across the age range to have the skills to go into schools and enthuse young people about career opportunities available here in this county. I've mentioned the World of Work website in this chamber before. It's an important part of what we do, and if you haven't looked at it, please do so. We have agreed with government just recently that all of these schemes we run are going to continue until 2021, so we've got some certainty. I'd welcome the support of everyone in this chamber in promoting vocational opportunities to young people and to their families. Thank you, councillor Matthew.
Thank you, councillor Davy, for that comprehensive reply. I'll now move to the next question, which is from councillor Sarah Parkin, which is for Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Davies, thanks for visiting Legborne this summer. One of the issues that you would say you'll tackle for is the provision of high-speed broadband for the village. The district councillor colleague of mine has been given a new date to switch on every two to three weeks for the six months. It's been a different date each time with a different excuse and reason for the delay. Could you please get this sorted and look into the reasons for this, please, Richard? The residents are becoming increasingly impatient and frustrated because it's just been a long string of broken promises, and it would be really good to give them an explanation as to how much can be promised to one community in such a short time and then each and every time they have their expectations dashed.
Councillor Parkin, thank you for the question. You are right to put your finger on this issue. However, I think I must mount a defence to a certain extent that it's not Lincolnshire County Council providing the superfast broadband, so we aren't directly responsible for the provision. Legborne is challenging. There's a new housing development going up, and there's various technical issues around ducting that are causing the problems. Unfortunately, we are limited in what we can do in terms of the BT provision. I had an email, I think, from the parish clerk two days ago outlining a similar set of problems that they've raised, and we are looking into it. We are, there are limited tools at our disposal, as I explained to you when we did our ward walk over in your patch, in terms of what we can do, so I'm not in a position to promise anything other than we'll continue to put pressure on BT to deliver. But obviously, I'll keep you in the loop as and when things arise.
Thank you, councillor Davies. My next question is from councillor Marianne Overton to councillor Barry Young. Mrs Overton.
I asked last time and raised the issue of potholes in my area, and I'm grateful that much has improved, so thank you for that. My next issue that I'm looking at, though, that's not complete, I have to say, there's still more to do, but my next issue that's come forward is there were a lot of people who had accidents in those potholes and are putting claims into the council, and if it fulfills the criteria, in other words, it was reported in a rural area more than twenty-eight days previously, the very same pothole, and now they've had an accident because nothing was done, then they do have a right to claim. But my question is, how good are we at dealing with these claims? I haven't been able to, despite my question, get the performance data. I've asked for the latest performance data on payouts for highways incidents, such as the amount and number of claims, percentage paid out, period between claims and payments, and that relation to the target and the trend that that's undergoing. I've had complaints from my area, from people in my area, for an accident in January, and it's not been settled. So it is clearly a very extended timeframe, and we normally have a requirement to pay a reasonable bill within thirty days. So by comparison, the months that these are taking seems to be unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you for your thanks to me for all the work I've done on potholes. Yes, no, I moan like hell, but it doesn't always get me everywhere. I can't answer your question off the top of my head, I'm afraid, and I will have to get back to you. The, as I'm sure you know, the wheels of justice grind exceedingly slowly, and it's not quite as simple as saying it happened in January ago, you should have a response and settlement by June. Every case is different, and I will get for you as comprehensive a response as I can.
Thank you, councillor Young. My next question comes from Lewis Strange to councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davy, with having to handle falling budgets and uncertainty over Brexit, would you agree that Lincolnshire County Council's initiative in taking the lead and pressing ahead with the iconic Lincolnshire Observatory sends out the message that Lincolnshire and its coast is open for business? It really is good news. We had a lovely day down there only the week before last, and I commend it. Everybody should visit. Councillor Davy, what are our plans to make sure that as many people as possible get to know about the Lincolnshire Observatory across the country?
Well, thank you, councillor Strange, for your question, and I'm very, very pleased you enjoyed your visit to our wonderful North Sea Observatory at Chapel Point. Firstly, it would be remiss of me not to obviously thank councillor Poll as well, because he was originally the executive member who started this project nearly a decade ago. So it is fantastic. We got it open in July. I'm really pleased to report that in the first seven and a half weeks, we had nearly sixteen thousand visitors to it. The first exhibition in the gallery space that was partly funded by Arts Council for England, which is called Two Hundred Fish, had nearly five thousand visitors to it. So it is absolutely a fantastic success story, and yes, it is absolutely an iconic building for our coast, and it very much sends a message, there is a different kind of Lincolnshire coast for the future, something that we are very keen on. Our bid for heritage coast status, work we're planning for the Coastal Country Park, I think, will continue to drive that message forward that the Lincolnshire coast is a place for people from far and wide to visit. And I would say, when I was in the Café Only last weekend, I met families from five different counties of England who were there just in the course of half an hour. So that's got to show that people are going to hear about it. You're absolutely right, we do need a bit more work on signage, certainly from the A52. So one of my officers is working with the LCC sign and lines team leader regarding some new brown signs for the building. And in terms of marketing, you're absolutely right, we need to make sure this initial excitement around the opening continues. We've had over twenty inquiries now for art exhibitions to go into the gallery space. There are twelve weeks of confirmed bookings already. We are working with Mary Powell, and she's working to visit Lincolnshire on ways of promoting the NSO and the heritage coast, Wild Coast offer more generally. And there'll be a series of events and programmes which the café operator is working with us on to make sure that the building has lots and lots of exciting things going on in the months ahead. If you haven't been, please visit, it is a fantastic facility, and it gives you a whole different perspective on the North Sea, which most people would regard as a grey, muddy kind of sea to look at, but looking through those windows at it, it really is a fantastic joy to behold. So get down there and have a look. Thank you.
Thank you to councillor Davy. Obviously, some good news. My next question comes from my good old friend there, Kev Clark, to Richard Davies. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davies, in today's report, page thirty-four, thirty-five, Lincoln Eastern Bypass, the section that starts with the total cost of the project is now expected to be a hundred and twenty million, with new costs coming as a result of changing contractors, et cetera, et cetera. What's the amount that the authority's got to pay for having different contractors, and where's this money coming from? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. It's undeniably been problematic, the transition from Corrillian to Galaford Try. Not only that, but the additional archaeology costs and land costs have crept in, which is amounted to the kind of increase in cost. In terms of where the money's going to come from, we're pulling it out of the capital budget, and that's where we fund all of our capital schemes from. We're also applying to the DFT for transitional funds to see if they'll recompense us with some of the additional costs as well, as yet I don't have the latest information as to whether that's been successful. I think it's useful as a, and you well, I appreciate you highlighting it, actually, because it does show one of the problems when schemes are delayed, because, you know, construction price index is rising as it does, every year that a substantial project like this is delayed, the eventual cost to the taxpayer, because as we understand, that's where almost all of the money comes from, is millions and millions of pounds, which is why I push and we fight for very quickly, heavily, sorry, to get on the ground rather than sit around talking about things for too much. And this is one of the problems with too much consultation, is you can ostensibly cost yourself millions of pounds and not change the outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. My next question comes from councillor Alison Austin for councillor Sue Woolley, and welcome back from your holiday.
I'm not sure about a holiday, Mr Chairman, a working holiday. Anyway, thank you. Right, my question is for councillor Sue Woolley. Councillor Woolley, it was brought to my attention by a resident from Boston that there was no representative from Lincolnshire County Council available to take part in a panel session in Lincoln arranged by Healthwatch in July entitled Vision 2020. Please can you inform me of the steps that Lincolnshire County Council is taking to help safeguard key consultant-led service areas such as the paediatric department and the stroke ward at the Pilgrim Hospital in Boston, and ultimately, we hope, as its status as a district hospital? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for the question, councillor Austin, and to think that you've flown all the way back into Humberside to come here, it just shows true grit, really does, and commitment. First part of your question around the... First part of your question around the 2020 Health Watch event. As you know, Lincolnshire County Council works very closely with our health colleagues on a day-to-day basis, whether that be operational issues or indeed on pieces of policy. And as an example, in a couple of weeks' time, we will have the joint dementia strategy coming out. So there is no issue as far as working together is concerned. But the bottom line was that on that particular day, there wasn't a senior officer available to go to this particular event. And you will have noticed that the number, the people who were sitting on the panel were all chief executives of their health organisations. And so it was a senior officers forum, as it were. But I'm sure you'll be pleased to hear that the councillors, the Lincolnshire county councillors, were represented by my colleague, Dr Mike Thompson, councillor Dr Mike Thompson, I should say. So there was representation at that particular event. When I looked back at the information, it came out very late in the day as to when this event, there was barely a month between invitations going out and being accepted. So from an officer point of view, and particularly a senior officer point of view, their diaries do get very booked up in a long while in advance. Moving on to the second part of your question. Lincolnshire County Council can only do so much with health colleagues. And part of the biggest problem around the issues that you've raised, as you know, is staffing. And so if we can't persuade people to come and work in Lincolnshire, then we've got a problem because we can have those facilities but if there's no one to run them, then there's not a lot more that we can do. Having said that, I think that the bit that, or the input that we have and can have is that we make sure that our health colleagues, and again, working very closely with them, we make sure that anybody that expresses an interest from a clinical point of view is aware that we've got really good schools, that we've got really good housing and that actually if they come to Lincolnshire and work, then they're probably going to have a good quality of life as well. So that's the constructive stuff that we can do. And indeed, with the successful recruitment of the 25 GPs that came into Lincolnshire, the county council was very closely involved with making sure that they knew exactly what facilities were available.
Thank you councillor Woolley. My next question is councillor Richard Butroyd for councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Butroyd.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Hill, please could you update us on RAF Scampton with regards to the heritage, the red arrows and the future of the base after its closure? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Butroyd, as the local member. I obviously welcome your interest in this, keen interest in this matter and obviously we'll make sure that you are fully kept informed of developments as they come to pass. As members are aware, the RAF announced fairly recently that they were going to exit from Scampton by 2022. And indeed, the red arrows would also mean, of course, that the red arrows would be leaving as well. So I think there's two main issues going on at the moment. First of all is the future of the red arrows. And as with others, we are campaigning with the local MP, Sir Edward Lee, to try and make sure that if and when the red arrows do move, they actually move to somewhere else in Lincolnshire. So we'll be making the case for that to happen. The other issue again, of course, is the, what's going to happen to the current base, which is a very large base and has some listed buildings on it, including hangars which have not been particularly well, very well maintained over the period. So we are now working with West Lindsay District Council, which is obviously the relevant district council, and we'll be working with the local MPs, Sir Edward Lee, to actually have some conversations. So about and lobby the government into what the future of that site will be. And we're already working and discussing with colleagues in West Lindsay as to what we could potentially suggest could be the future for that site. What we're all keen to avoid is the defence organisation, the infrastructure organisation, who take charge of disposal of sites. We don't want a situation, which has happened elsewhere in Lincolnshire and in the country, where it is just sold off to the highest bidder and they just leave and then subsequent problems do then emerge, which is, are very difficult to resolve. So what would be better with a being organised withdrawal? Making sure that the future is the right one, not only for that area and for the site, but also for Lincolnshire. And for example, we are also, I think councillor Poll is about to go down to Rutland, where there is good examples of where they've had a good relationship with the people who have responsibility for disposing of the sites and then ended up with a good result for everybody. So there's a lot of work to be done so far and of course, the Ministry of Defence have got to confirm that they will actually leave the sites and that will be the case. So that is the situation as it stands and I'll be able to update the council when we've got some more information. We are trying to get some more information from the Ministry of Defence, actually what the plan is. They don't seem to have one apart from selling everything and disposing of the liabilities to somebody else, which I think is a bit naive on their part. So I will keep, we will keep the council informed as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hill. My next question comes from councillor Matthew Bowles to Richard Davis. Councillor Bowles.
Thank you, chairman. Morning councillor Davis. During the summer, I was contacted by a residents group in my division who informed me that a grit bin located in the neighbourhood had been removed. This bin had been used for a number of years by the residents as a lot of the area is steep hills, enabling the residents to access the main roads on the way to work in the morning and evening and such like. After speaking with officers, I found out that the grit bin was removed because it had litter inside it, which complies with LCC's policy. The residents are desperate for this bin to be removed. They're willing to undertake inspections of the bin on a regular basis to make sure that no litter is in place. If so, remove it, et cetera. I'm wondering if you could please help or advise in this, advise in this matter. I so far have received different and contradictory answers from different officers as to a solution. Thank you.
Good morning councillor. Yes, thank you for the question. I mean, I have to say, I've seen some of this myself with kind of whiskey bottles and the like dropped in them, which is frustrating. It would seem to me that the obvious solution there is to return a grit bin. And it's great that you've got some community members who are prepared to kind of keep an eye on it because that does really help, that lets us know when it runs low on salt and things. So we can take this offline and get it sorted for you.
Thank you councillor Davis. My next question is councillor Robin Rendshaw to councillor, Mrs Patricia Badwell.
Thank you. Good morning councillor Badwell. If you were given an extra £5 million, say when the Missing Millions scheme delivers, how would you allocate it?
Well, thank you for that question, Robin. Well, I don't really know. I suppose, being very selfish, I'd look after my own couple of areas. But it would be up to the council to decide how to do that. I think you know that, when we get extra money, that it goes through scrutiny panels and the executive and that would decide. But obviously, within adults, childrens, public health, we have managed our budgets very well this year. So I think actually probably it would, my colleague councillor Davis would have quite a pull on that money for his potholes or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Badwell for your reply. Thank you, members. My next question comes from, let me see, councillor Ray Wooton to councillor Sue Woolley. Councillor Wooton.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Councillor Woolley, following the overnight closure of Grantham Hospital A and E, the Health Minister Steve Barclay, MP, has called on the ULHT and CCG to compile a report on how they intend to consult on a future services in Grantham before December. Do you support this action and call to implement this as soon as possible? Thank you, chairman.
Well, this could be a one-word answer, yes, but, and I jolly well do support it. At long last, it does appear that health colleagues are actually going into a phase where they start to consult with the residents, not just in the Grantham area, but dare I say, in the rest of the county on other issues around the acute services review, around the STP. And it does look as though there's a little bit of movement at long last. But having said that, I think it's slightly disappointing that it's taken a letter from the Minister of Health to prompt two local organisations to do what they should be doing. But let's take it whilst we can, it's good news. And hopefully, yeah, by the end of December, residents in both Grantham and indeed the wider county will have that opportunity to say what they think they want for their health services.
Thank you councillor Woolley. My next question comes from councillor Robert Parker to councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Parker.
I got that wrong, Martin, actually. I know you've got a big interest in IT, but it's really Richard that I wanted to ask the question to. In relation to IT and members, it's a subject of conversation at Ovi and scrutiny management board and I'm sure in the members' room. But I just wondered what you could say to the wider council, as it were, all of us, about what you see as how IT for members can be improved quickly and in a longstanding way?
Yeah, thank you. It's a very good question, actually. Hopefully, members will have noticed that we have our IT team stationed outside the room this morning. Again, as is standard on days of full council, to enable them to support members with any issues. I think the reality was, if we're being honest, is some decisions were made that perhaps weren't right in terms, there was a lack of member involvement in some of the IT decisions that were made around the choices of some of the technologies in particular. I think it's fair to say, subject to a kind of legal disagreement, I guess, that Boxer has not been an overwhelming success, which is why we're in the process of translating and transitioning users from Boxer on their iPads. The majority of users do use iPads and that's very effective. The Active Sync solution has still got problems. As part of the transition of the data farm, we're moving ahead to make some of those problems go away. Because it's ostensibly a confidence problem, inasmuch as if we sit here trying to talk about spending five or six, seven million pounds more on IT for the council as a whole, it's very hard to justify that when colleagues are sat looking at their own devices with issues. I think there has to be more realisation amongst the IT decision-making process about what members actually need and what they don't need. I think there is an element of, candidly, and I won't be popular for saying this, in reducing choice, because allowing so many people to have so much choice about what they operate means supporting that is quite complicated. The reality is if you are an officer here, you are very largely, apart from very senior officers, told what you're going to be given and you have to use it. And that perhaps makes the management of that more easily. I don't necessarily think that members' IT should be treated hugely different to officer IT either. I think if we expect officers to work with laptops with Windows 10 in a certain way, I don't think it's too much of an expectation that also members should work in a similar way. So in terms of quick wins, we've got to get the Active Sync issue sorted out on iPads so that members' email works effectively. We're still having issues around email, for example, and delays coming in. I'm hoping over the coming weeks that we should be sorted. And now's an excellent opportunity actually to say to members, if you have got any problems with your iPads or your devices, please make use of the staff outside to do so. If you have any longstanding issues, please do report those back through the IT help desk. And if you feel like you're not getting that responded to and dealt with, please contact me personally. And I think we can establish a baseline for IT for members moving forward and then we can start to look at doing more advanced things. Members will be aware, you've now got the Fix My Street app on your tablet device. And I'm hoping that you're starting to get a handle on how that works. And it's that use of technology for members that I think will make us and bring us closer to the 21st century because we're certainly not there at the moment.
Thank you councillor Davis for that. And my final question comes from councillor Mike Brooks and again to councillor Richard Davis. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, chairman. We've had recent announcements about highway schemes around the county to tackle traffic congestion problems. And quite rightly, people in Boston are asking what's happening to tackle our traffic congestion problems. And I just wondered if councillor Davis could please update us, the council and the people of Boston, on the progress being made with the Boston Transport Strategy and the Boston Distributor Road?
Thank you councillor Brooks, that's a great question. And of course, resolving issues in and around Boston across the county aren't just around new technology and we've got the new hot tub equipment out on the east coast, for example. The question specifically refers to the Boston Transport Strategy. Now, this is a document that we're working really closely together now with Boston Borough Council and are delivering some real improvements on the ground. We've done walkabouts. The previous iteration of the Transport Strategy delivered about £15 million worth of improvements. We're now looking at the next round of improvements around minor junction changes, light phasing and that kind of thing, Mr Chairman. But to get on to the meat of the issue, and that's the Boston Distributor Road, for want of a better word, the bypass, and we know what we're talking about. I'm pleased to be able to say that we are going to be bidding into the Department for Transport for funding to start the design of this road. It's going to be a complicated civil engineering project. Undoubtedly, it's going to cost more than £100 million to build. It's going to involve, as things in Lincolnshire always do, significant structural developments in terms of bridges and drain crossings. So I think it's right, judging by the level of support there is in Boston and Lincolnshire and I'm led to believe in Westminster for this project, that we say to government, right, we really need you to step up and help with some of the preparatory works and ask them to get their chequebook out.
Thank you councillor Davis. Right, very good, 47 seconds to spare. We've done very well, members. Congratulations. Item number seven, we move on to the review of the financial performance. And I've just lost my, here we go, copies. As an amendment to this item has been received, I propose that we suspend council procedure rules for this item only, so that there can be one debate. And in doing so, I need a second for that proposal.
I'm happy to second that proposition, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Vice Chairman. We need now a vote on that, so all those in favour, please show. Okay, any against and any abstentions, that's clearly carried. I wish to remind members that rules 13.5 and 13.9 of the council procedure rules are set out on page 7 of the Order of Proceedings, which will have not been suspended. Councillor Hill.
Well, thank you, chairman. Well, this is a good news item, very good news for the council. Unlike Somerset, for example, which in its financial downturn is having to suddenly find, I believe, something in the order of £15 million savings. We are in the happy position of reporting an underspend. And could I congratulate my portfolio colleagues and indeed officers for delivering a very solid and prudent result from the budget? And actually, service underspends are actually very, not very large. And some of the other, the major underspends are on other issues like funding of the capital programme. Obviously, we've had a little bit of a debate already about it. And in terms of the amount, when I replied to councillor Kelly, what I forgot to mention, of course, was that of the 27 million she talked about, 17 million of that is actually held by the schools. And the rules are that that money is not ours to raid, if you like, and it's very much for all those schools who have underspends to decide for themselves, the governing bodies, how that money should be spent. So in effect, this is a decision as what to do about the total underspend of the council. And it is there all outlined in the various pages. I'm hoping members will have read it. And for example, there's the 1% underspend of, which is a policy of the council. So if an area of the council, a department, if you like, underspends, the rules are, it can keep 1% of the underspend, but also probably have to keep the 1% overspend. So that is, that has been agreed and Ovi and scrutiny, I believe, have actually seen the details of that. So there's a substantial amount of money already which has been kept, if you like, to help with service delivery. And I know various colleagues have been looking at as to how that money could have been used usefully. In addition, there are obviously some other items here where, again, sensibly, we need to do, put things to one side. For example, we had a very hard winter, so half a million extra to go back into the winter maintenance reserve so that if we have another hard winter this year, councillor Davis, we'll be, have plenty of snowplows and gritters to make sure we are all kept safe. safe. So that is the crux of it, and of course, as has been referred earlier, the remainder of the underspend will actually be then, we have, the executive is proposing that that goes into our financial volatility reserve, and as I explained in questions, I won't repeat myself, it is clearly the view of officers and myself and councillor Whittington, that and the rest of the executive, the prudent thing in this very volatile time, very uncertain time financially, we need to keep that money. So if we are having to permanently go down to a lower spending base, we can do that in an organised manner in a timescale which is sensible, which will also give us time to actually, A, get down to that spending level, but also look at ways we can actually ameliorate the effects of that loss. And of course, if we do best, if everything comes to pass with fair funding and adult care funding and all the rest of it, extra money for local government, obviously, we would look at this in a different light, and we would be able to plan how to spend this money, extra money on services. But, repeat, all services underspent, service delivery is really good, and I'm not sure I can advise, there's no area that I'm aware of, there are great problems with. So we are in a good place, both operationally and financially, and I think we need to be careful to make sure we stay in that position. So I'll let councillor Parker now move his amendment, and obviously then there will be a debate.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Hill. I do need a second for this proposal, have we got a second?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I'm happy to second this motion, and I'll actually reserve my right to speak later, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. One amendment has been received, is there a mover and a second, councillor Parker?
I think it's right to begin by going back to the full council meeting in February, when we moved an amendment to the budget as it was presented then. We argued a number of things, and the first one was about the idea of making investment to save money in the future, and we referred, from our side, to a social mobility report that had been published the previous year, which showed how, across the country and including Lincolnshire, that there was serious difficulties about how some children were not able to get the same sort of services and outcomes as others. In other words, there was a social mobility gap. And if I just mention just one as an example, that when it came to attainment eight scores for pupils eligible for free school meals, North Caith Even area and schools was placed twenty-third nationally, whereas West Lindsay schools were placed three hundred and fourth in the country. So in essence, in Lincolnshire, there was a gap between the achievement of our children on free school meals, substantial gap between those in North Caith Even and those in West Lindsay. So the thrust of the proposals that we put to the last full council were about improving social mobility. Just another example, when it came to children eligible for free school meals achieving at least the expected level of reading, writing and maths at the end of key stage two, we had real differences between Boston children who were placed twenty-sixth in the country, which is good, South Holland sixty-sixth, North Caith Even eighty-first, whereas Lincoln children were placed two hundred and forty-ninth, and East Lindsay two hundred and sixty-fifth in the country. So in that area, again, there were substantial differences. So the starting point of our motion today, the amendment, is to look at ways of tackling those substantial differences across the county. And this is about the future, it's about recognising that the money that we could invest out of the carryforward that we have at the moment would bring long-term benefits across this county. The establishment of a social mobility task force, the expansion of the small schools project, because I think everybody accepts that sometimes there are great difficulties in children in small schools getting the same level of achievement as in larger schools, not always, but there is research to suggest that. I'm using this as an example, and it's been circulated, what we wanted to do is to bring about trial research-based interventions at key stage four in targeted areas, and so on. Post sixteen, in fact, Colin Matthews is not here at the moment, was talking about sixteen, sixteen years plus, we were saying that some sort of wraparound support for those not in education, employment and training was necessary. So between us, we were trying to say, from our side of the chamber, that when it comes to an underspend, we have to look at the important issues that could be addressed, starting from now with a view to a long-term improvement in a particular cohort, group of our young people, because it's not fair, in one sense, using the word fairness, that it's dependent on where somebody lives and goes to school, that their chances for the future of improvement are going to be restricted. Now, when it comes to the total commitment in this paper that we're putting before us, two point seven million with a carryforward, this isn't a question of what is the best affordability, because we already know that our financial volatility reserve would be under the current proposals at fifty-one million pounds, and we're suggesting that it be reduced to forty-eight point two eight seven. Now, but when we think about that difference, yes, we have to look at the future, and certainly we've never argued that we should take decisions, we've always supported a budget that is at least to the point of acceptability of being within the financial constraints that we have, and we're not in any remote way like Northamptonshire, neither of the Labour Group on this side actually advocated any policies that could be condoned or attributed to the likes of what goes on in Northamptonshire. But at the same time, we have to recognise, that when it comes to allocation resources, important resources, at this stage of the year, then there would be benefits to the young children in our county. Same approach applies in relation to Citizens Advice Services, and particularly the commitment to Park and Ride. So we've got other issues that we want to bring about. Just to lighten the mood, just a little about Park and Ride, Richard Wills has been here since the year 2000, and even before that, I was advocating Park and Ride. So this isn't something that we've just plucked out of the air, it's been an issue in Lincoln, nineteen ninety-seven, I was advocating, it was election year, so yes, he would be advocating Park and Ride at that particular time, but let's be honest, Park and Ride in Lincoln and congestion go hand in hand. I think there would be, and I think a lot of people would agree, that the congestion could be eased significantly through Park and Ride. So together, the reinstatement of CAB services, which, you know, is an important issue when a lot of people face difficulties in getting entitlement to benefit advice given, the whole question of social mobility, we think this would be money well spent, two point seven one eight million, nobody can doubt that we can't afford it, and that's why we're moving this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker, well timed. And we have a second, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's interesting, actually, at this point in council to have a bit of review of where we are. I would hate for an opportunity like this just to become a paper exercise and something that we just waft through and nod on a wink midway through the financial year. It's an opportunity to review our performance, our priorities, and what we actually want for our communities. Yesterday, I was lucky enough to attend a Sipfer in CFPS conference on the long-term financial outlook for councils, it was their inaugural kind of joining of minds, a meeting of minds. It was very interesting, actually, to have their take, because we spent a lot of the day talking about risk appetite, and what council's appetite was for risk. And one of the things that came forward very clearly from the standard is that you have to be comfortable with the risk that you're taking, you have to know about it, acknowledge it, and be comfortable with it. But to coin a running phrase, that councils may have to become comfortable with the uncomfortable, that we may have to push ourselves a little bit more out of our comfort zones to actually be assured of that financial stability in the long term. And I think all of us who've been knocking around this chamber for a few years now will understand why we would need to do that. But I just want to ask, first of all, what are actually the risks of doing this, of these amendments? I don't think there are any. The risk that we're taking is that we'll have slightly less reserve in what is already a very big fund in a couple of years' time, as opposed to potentially a massive financial and social investment in our communities. So in fact, I would say the risk and the benefit really do outweigh each other. We're not talking about a risky financial, commercial strategy here to bring about a potential financial return, we're talking about an investment in our people, in our communities, that will bring a social return, but also a financial return, because every time we invest in people, then we are saving people from becoming a resource problem for the state later down the line. And so this is why I would always ask us to balance the idea of spending now with the financial savings that will come further down the track, but also that moral imperative for us to be the best council that we can be, here and now. Yes, I recognise the challenges of the future, but they're unknown challenges as yet because we don't know the settlement. And what I'm saying is, let's invest the money that we know we can afford, because this is not a risky strategy, and put extra into our communities and our people, and especially our young people, and let's do that now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parkin. I have two or three speakers, I will take councillor Mrs Bradwell, please. Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I just felt I had to speak on this, as one would. You know, I think we've done a damn good job, actually, providing a stable budget. We know how a number of councils, if you go into the East Midlands, many of them are in very much a different position to what we are. And in 2010, we made some really, really tough decisions, we changed the way this council worked, we put more money into the frontline services, we took a lot of back-office services out. And those tough decisions have paid dividends, because we are in a position now where we do have an underspend, but we know that the horizon isn't very pretty at the moment, with the fact that do we know we're going to get extra funding? So I believe we are being very cautious and keeping money back for a rainy day. Some of the things in the Labour Amendment, we're already doing, the million pounds that children's services underspent by this year, we are actually expanding our small school project, we will be working now with seventy-five small schools, we are doing more interventions within primary schools, and we've had a million pounds from the DFE to do that with, with the learning partnership. We are doing more in key stage four, we've got a big project in Boston at the moment that's been looked into. And you mentioned children's centres, putting two thousand seven hundred and fifty in there, you know, they're highly valued, they're working well, and to be honest, I don't believe that a budget that's working well and a service that's working well, we need to do more with. I do believe we do a very, very good job in Lincolnshire, yes, Rich has gone, but highways, we have struggled with our highways this year, but actually, within children's services, adult care, I think we've done very, very well. We are providing services that the people of Lincolnshire need, but, you know, we're not wasting money, and I don't think it's right that we'd want to put over twenty million pounds, we've got twenty million pounds in savings, and you want to invest another two million. We might need that another year.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Bradwell. My next speaker, I'll call on councillor Mrs Marion Overton, councillor Overton.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think we have to be realistic about what's going to happen to this motion, and whether it's actually going to get passed or not, but I think it's also an opportunity for us to raise the issues that are important to all of us, and perhaps that's the important point of today. Just picking up a couple of issues, I'm pleased to hear that there is more being done for the small schools, this is vital, and you probably know, you've probably heard on the radio, we've got mothers and past pupils from my local school in Wellborn who climbed a mountain, climbed up Ben Nevis this last weekend, which was a huge effort for them, because they're not that way inclined normally, and it was to raise funds for their school, because these small schools are struggling, and they do need every penny they can get. The point about the social mobility, I think, is difficult, because it doesn't mean, I'm not sure what it means, it could be increasing grades, which I understand, it could be something like the troubled families money that used to be targeted, that came from central government, and tackled not just the individual child's needs, but the whole family, to try and lift them out of a very difficult situation they were in, and into a place where they're of work and a successful future. And the point about the needs, I think, is really important as well, with young people who, it's such a formative time, and I know as well, because my own son's just going through it at the moment, that business, you probably remember, when you left school and you're looking for your career move, and it's a, you left university or school and you get that job, that is such a tricky time. So it's really important, I think, that we do help young people through this. And lastly, for me, the Citizens' Vice Bureau, it does seem to be a really vital service for our residents, and it does do some outreach into the rural areas, and it does make a significant difference in those families, but also in saving our council resources, because somebody needs to advise people properly and independently so that they can make the best opportunity of what they've got. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Overton. My next speaker, I shall bring in councillor Angela Newton. Councillor Newton.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe that this council has, since I've been here anyway, has been very prudent in how they've handled money, and with this surplus this year, I do agree that the bulk of it should go into the volatility reserve, and some of it is already accounted for. But what I would like to suggest is, or ask councillor Parker, if he would agree that we take these as separate items, because there is, particularly the Citizens' Advice Services, I know I personally would like to support adding some more money into there if possible, because I see a lot of people in our council, because of South Holland, the Citizens' Advice Bureau sits in our council office, I see more and more people sitting there waiting for advice, particularly with how the financial services and benefits have changed recently, there's lots of confusion, particularly amongst young families, so I would ask that we take these as individual items so that we can vote on them as separate issues.
Thank you for that, councillor Mrs Newton. Councillor Robin Renshaw, councillor Renshaw.
Thank you, Chairman. This review is well timed, and to carry on without seriously considering change may be a missed opportunity. An over pessimistic view will not portray us as dynamic entrepreneurial leaders of the community. This overspend, this underspend, sorry, has accumulated revenue from the taxation of hard-working families, who certainly would not have subscribed to a tax now, hoard later scenario. I am sure that no candidate for election would propose tax now and hoard on their manifesto. It is an opportunity missed if we do nothing about it, and I take the view, it's nice to choose from a menu of what we'd like and what we wouldn't like, but I think we've looked at what we proposed at budget time, and we seriously considered where we are now, and formulated our amendment in the terms of that, and I would support it.
Thank you, councillor Renshaw. We have councillor Chris Brewis, councillor Brewis.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll be very brief, and I think that Trish Bradwell and Angela said largely what should be said. I think to say hoard later is putting it a bit far, actually, I think we've been very prudent compared with one or two others around the country, and I don't think that the future is very rosy, I think we've got to be extremely cautious. I'm perhaps fortunate in that within my, not only in my division, but my own community, I have the first video CAB service in the country, immensely proud of it. And I, for one, think that with the increase of universal credit and people finding it incredibly difficult to understand that the load that's going to fall on CAB will increase, and I suspect before very long, we'll be coming back to that one again, because if we had to employ people to do everything that CAB did, it would cost us a lot of money. But our prudence is something that I think of which we should be immensely proud. But I really do think that saying... But I really do think that saying tax now and hoard later is putting it a bit strong, Chairman. I don't agree.
Thank you, councillor Brewis. My next one on the list is councillor Sue Woolley. Councillor Woolley.
Thank you, Chairman. And it's specifically on the issue of the CAB funding. Councillor Copeland and indeed councillor Grocock and I attended the AGM of South Links CAB at the beginning of this week and no one would dispute that CAB do an absolutely marvellous job and that they see an awful lot of people on all sorts of issues. But I will come back to something that I've already said in a previous council meeting, that Lincolnshire County Council is not the only place where CABs can go to get funding. And indeed, in the south, and I will only speak about the south because I have the information here, the significant amount of money comes from the county council, from South Holland District Council and indeed South Caerfawr district council. But a couple of the things that actually bother me is that within their financial statements, last year they employed 31 people. That's on top of the 137 volunteers. And I would want to know more about the 31 employees because that's only in one section of the county. And on top of that, there is a comment that says no employee received employee benefits of more than £60,000. And when the county council is having to cut its cloth so severely, I would have to say, and I did indeed say to the chairman of that CAB, when in the last decade, councillor Hill has mentioned, we will have lost 86% of our revenue funding, that are we sure that our organisations that we support are also making sure that they spend their funding wisely? I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Councillor Tobbett, do you have a point of order?
I have a declaration to make. I didn't realise the conversation was going to get into such depth on funding for the CAB. I'm a member of Lincoln District CAB, which is a limited company by guarantee, so in fact I am involved there as I think you are too, Mr Chairman. So I declare an interest in that.
Not anymore, councillor Tobb. So I was, but I was the representative from North Caerfawr but I was moved some 18 months, two years ago. So thank you for that. Next speaker is councillor Jackie Brockway. Brockway, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Much of what I was going to say, councillor Bradwell, has been said but I can take it on a little further, I think. Certainly, we already do a considerable number of these things but I think it's important to realise too that a lot of the items being asked for here are actually being carried out by other organisations as well. For instance, trial research based interventions, key stage four in target areas, that is being done all the time in the schools and in the academies. Their outcomes and their decision making, the way they take their courses and things are based very much on national and international research and they do buy into this and they do pay considerable attention to it. With, you already know that some of the other things we're doing but the, I'm very particularly interested in the children's centres because I go to them with my grandchildren. I don't know if that's a need to declare personal interest, probably not, but, and I have to say that I don't feel that social mobility is achieved through a drive or a mobility task force. It's achieved, I think, by establishing self-reliance, especially through the kind of quality education that we provide here in Lincolnshire. Now, when I watch the children and take part, I'm on the floor with them, in these children's centres, the opportunities being given for the basic skills, the language, the social interaction, the music, the play are absolutely phenomenal and I would certainly encourage the use of the children's centres because they do facilitate social mobility. So I'm kind of agreeing with you slightly the other way around. In fact, the chairman of the Children's Scrutiny Committee has just encouraged members to go and look at these children's centres and I would certainly encourage that as well. I seem to understand myself that in relation to what councillor Woolley has said, that last year when we were asked to provide money for the Citizens Advice Bureau, their actual figures themselves were pretty healthy. And I remember us discussing that then, so I wonder if they have any different situation now. But ultimately, what we have to do is provide the services that our organisation has to provide. So I'm afraid I can't support this motion on the basis of the comments that I've just made and on the basis of the comments that my colleagues have made as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I've had one or two more join the list. I'll bring in councillor Kev Clark next. Councillor Clark.
Thank you again, Chairman. We sit on the committee where Citizens Advice Bureau came up, you know, about the funding. I remember it well because I was the only one who voted against it. The committee passed the cutting. But listening to the councillors today, I'm wondering if there's a hidden agenda behind this because listening particularly to councillor Woolley, when she says that, you know, these figures and that figures, you know, was it based on solely saving money for the council or was it based on other issues? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark, for your comment. I'll bring in now councillor Kate Cook. Councillor Mrs Cook.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I think with the Labour Group Amendment, the one issue on it that I would really want to see happening is the reinstatement of the cuts to the Citizens Advice Bureau. I know that councillor Woolley has just mentioned 31 employees being employed. Well, I only have experience of shadowing one of them and that was before becoming a county councillor. I spent the day with him, actually, shadowing him at the Peter Hodgkinson Centre and I was just absolutely amazed with his knowledge, experience and how he dealt with the patience there. He actually, he lost his job directly as a result of the cuts and I believe, I can't remember off the top of my head because I've only seen this today, I would have looked into it, I believe four or five lost their jobs and that was out of the 210,000. I have spoken with the staff at the Lincoln office, this was just before the summer break, so I haven't looked into it further, but all I know is that that money is missed greatly and this individual is missed. He used to train the others because he'd been working there for so long and his experience and skills are missed by them. So that's my personal experience. I believe that they are looking for us to, or hoping that we will reinstate that money. I don't, that was the impression I had after my meeting with them and I said I'd try to help them with it. So I just feel passionately that we should do this. It's the right thing to do. There might be other organisations out there who can help individuals but the thing is that Citizens Advice, it's always the first port of call for so many people. That's the first place that people go to for help. And I agree with my colleagues who've said that if Citizens Advice don't help them, it's going to put extra pressure on our councils, district, county. For me, it's clear cut that this should happen. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Cook. Right, I will now bring in councillor Mark Wickington.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Thank you for allowing me to speak subsequently. The reason why I'm supporting the motion is because it represents very, very sound financial prudence, sound financial management. Every year, our colleagues in the Finance Department set some very good budgets based on demand, based on activity. They take into account known demographic pressures coming down the line. They manage the resources very well, which is why every year we're in the fortunate position where we do have an underspend, which sounds quite a lot, you know, millions of pounds, but represents a very, very small percentage of the overall revenue budget of the county council. We're proposing to transfer £18 million into the Volatility Reserve. We know, coming down the line, there are some very real financial pressures, a lot of financial risks facing this council. It's several years before we know what the future funding arrangements are likely to be. And I think it's proven that it comes upon us to make adequate provision for the future, which is why I'm supporting our group, the administration proposal. In terms of the Labour Amendments, of course, it's not just £2.7 million. The recurrent element of it is £2.643. So this will be spent if these motions were passed, not only in this financial year but in subsequent financial years as well. So over a four-year period, for instance, that would cost the authority £10.572 million. So in effect, and our Volatility Reserve is around about £50 million, that would represent roughly 20% of our reserve because that's the problem with all of these proposed increases in expenditure. It's not just for this year, it's for next year and it's for subsequent years as well. We've already heard from councillor Bradwell, that's certainly around a lot of these items around education, that because of the financial prudence that this authority follows, a million pounds from the underspend has been able to go back into the education areas and is actually funding an awful lot of the items that's on this list. We've heard from councillor Woolley that there are other sources of funding available to the Citizens Advice Bureau. So all of this stuff actually is, there's provision already for it. I'm delighted that councillor Parkin refers to risk. I've spent the majority of, a lot of my working life as a councillor increasingly talking around risk. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the meeting in London yesterday. But in terms of organisations becoming uncomfortable with risk, organisations that become uncomfortable with risk, Mr Chairman, go bust.
Thank you, councillor Wickington. Right, there was a mention that CAB would be taken as a separate item but it's been put on block so we'll have to just take it as it comes forward. So now we need to vote on this amendment, so.
Briefly, Chairman, I don't think I would want to change my advice to the council as what to do. I think just to remind the debate we had about Citizens Advice Bureau, I think even though it's, we're blocked votes on all those recommendations, I think it is noted that certainly councillor, councillor Newton has a reservation certainly on one of the recommendations. Coming back to Citizens Advice Bureau, just to remind members, the money which was taken out was not the core funding, that continues. The money which was removed from the budget was that money which was to do with income generation in effect, advising people to how they can claim, claim from the government basically or from other organisations. So just to be clear about that, and I think at the time of the debate was clear that there are other organisations which are doing that job as well. So, yeah, it is unfortunate when people lose their jobs but I'm not sure that the description that councillor Cook gave was particularly, if that was someone doing a day-to-day job, removing this particular funding was not the cause of any redundancy there. The rest of it, I think councillor Wickington put it very clearly that this is the issue with all of this and of course, just to mention the park and ride, of course, that will be taking us on the road to a £10 million spend on park and ride at least, plus a million pound a year revenue. If, you know, at this stage, although it is a long-term aspiration, I think it is too soon personally to start down that road. So I would just recommend that members take the prudent approach, the sensible approach to make sure that in a few years' time we are in a reasonable financial position and not in desperate straits.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Okay. Right, right. We now need to vote on this amendment, so can we have a show of hands? All those in favour, please? Please show. All those against? That is, thank you. Any abstentions? Abstention there. Thank you. That is clearly lost. We now go to the original motion. We've no further speakers. Can we please vote? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. And abstentions? Thank you for that. Right, so that is clearly dealt with. Item number eight is the corporate parenting strategy. The report by the Chief Director of Children's Services has been circulated and I'll call on councillor Mrs Bradwell to move.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It gives me great pleasure to actually move this corporate parenting strategy. We actually, we look on being corporate parent as very important in this local authority and we know that, you know, our looked-after children, care leavers, should receive the same care and nurturing and life chances as what we would expect from our own children. I think over the years, members and officers have taken this role very, very seriously and I thank everybody for that. The strategy is about ensuring that everybody across the council, in all the different council functions as well, recognise their duty to support our young people. We have a very good proactive corporate parenting panel. Obviously, they've only been instituted since the last election but really getting their teeth into the job, holding officers to account about the services that our young people receive and also meeting with our young people as well who are in care, finding out whether, you know, everything's well or, you know, what's wrong, what are we doing wrong? And we listen very carefully to those young people and, you know, value everything that they say. A good example of how we've been successful is that we do support 18 young people at the moment going through university. Now, we would say perhaps that's not enough but, you know, we have, we are doing that. Our GCSEs again are in line nationally but we would say we want the very best for our young children and we will continue to give those young children mentoring and support when they're in those secondary years so that they can achieve their full potential. We've got at the moment Care to Learn project, I don't know whether members know about that, and that's about supporting our foster carers and residential home staff and schools to work together more closely. We do know at times that, you know, our staff maybe aren't being the parent that we would be going and knocking on that teacher's door and saying, hey up, you know, you should be doing this or, you know, we need to talk about the issues you're having. And from this project, we're seeing some real, real benefits from actually foster parents being more confident and we're seeing our young people as well being confident learners and, you know, sitting there in the class and taking their full part. And actually, that project has actually been nominated recently for a national award. So I think, you know, well done to our staff as well for putting something together that's, you know, making the people who look after these young people be more successful. So as I say, I'm really pleased to move this strategy. It is a very important part of what this council does for some very vulnerable young people who sometimes find themselves in a bad place but from having really, really good foster carers and residential staff, we're able to help those young people and for them to move on in their lives when they get older. And if you go into any of our residential homes, I mean, I was a visiting member for many years, there's still young people coming back to their homes when they've got married. They bring their children. So I've got, you know, sorry, I'm really pleased to move this and I will come back if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Bradwell. I have a speaker and I'll call on Sarah Parkin. Councillor Parkin. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Turned herself off. We need a second, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to second this paper this morning and I would reserve the right, with your permission, to come back later. Thank you.
Certainly can. Right, now I will call on Sarah Parkin. Councillor Parkin, thank you. Right, now I will call on Sarah Parkin, councillor Parkin, thank you.
False start. I'm really pleased to have this paper with us today. I think that the fact that we have this corporate parenting strategy and it's coming to full council is really, really significant, because I think the key message for us today as councillors is that this is all of us. There's not one single person in this room who is exempt from this strategy. When you walk through this store of this council as a county councillor, you are a corporate parent. Even if you don't know what it means, you are one, and it's incumbent upon all of us to actually really get to grips with what that means, and I really welcome the strategy coming here. I have actually a slight issue with how we kind of package all of this. The strategy is really, really clear, really clear, that we parent these children as if they were our own. Now, I don't corporately parent my own kids, and I think the phrase is really, really wrong. And I may chaotically parent my children most of the time, but it's not corporate. And I do wonder about that language, that when we're describing ourselves to these young people, whether in fact that is the right phrase and the right words that we should be using. I recognise it's the statutory and it's the legal one, but is it the right one? Is that really how we see our role? Because it's not how I see it, for both my own children and for these young people either. It's about safety, it's about nurture, it's about love, it's about education, there's not much corporate about it. I'd also like to say that this responsibility is not just ours, it's the district councils, it's police, it's health, it's schools. We in fact share the parenting of these young people amongst many organisations, and in fact, I really like the idea of shared parenting, far more than corporate parenting, because I think it then makes it quite clear that we're inviting other people into the frame and holding them to account for what happens to these young people. One of the things that I think is particularly good is that all of us in this strategy are asked to meet with looked-after children and with leaving care workers once a year. And I think my only kind of concern about the engagement plan is that isn't mentioned, that isn't picked up in the engagement plan, so I would ask for the delivery of that to be really explained to councillors as to how that's going to be managed, because it's absolutely the right thing to do, but will take some organising. But I also say that as somebody who had input into the formation of the strategy, I didn't pick up on that while we were drafting it, so fair dues. It is just that piece of clarity that we need. I really welcome that this is here before us. I think we're doing some really good things with these young people. I think we take our corporate parenting role really seriously, and for the most part, we do it really well. We can do it better, but this is a really good starting point for all of us as councillors to get to understand this role. I'd also like to point out that we have none of our looked-after children who have been permanently excluded from our schools, and that is the way it should be, and that is the way we should keep it, and we should also be holding other organisations to account for the way they treat our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next speaker, councillor Robert Fox.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, listening to Sarah, I agree with virtually everything you said there, Sarah. For me, it's not corporate parenting, it's collective parenting, because it's a collective responsibility of not only this council and its officers, but as you said, the NHS, districts, the police and so forth. And when you've looked round the room and said, "This strategy involves everyone in here", that includes the people in the centre of the room. And I'm pleased to say that it came to scrutiny in June, as you know, or could have been June it was, and we were fully supportive of it. And I know, because we worked closely with them, that the corporate parenting manager and his team has been very proactive in pushing this around all the departments in the council and externally as well. For example, with the district councils now giving exemptions in council tax to care leavers, that's very important. But as far as members are concerned, the way it operates is within four quadrants in Lincolnshire, and each quadrant has a V4C, which stands for Voices for Choices, and that's a looked-after children's collective kind of voice where they come together. And it's great, you can go and visit them, you can ask democratic services when the next visits are, and you can go along and join in. We also have the big conversation where all of the V4C people come together and discuss problems and being there and engaging with them. I know Kate has been to these, and it's very, very, they love seeing us there, and you can listen to what their problems are. And the next one's in Boston in October, so try and make the effort to go there. And finally, of course, we celebrate the achievements of our looked-after children and care leavers and their foster parents in Lincoln once here at the Fab Awards, and this year and the year before have been absolutely exceptional, and they're terrific to go to. So all members, it's all, as David said, it's all our responsibility, so you can join in and listen to what the young people have to say. So I'm very happy to support this strategy and wish it well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fox. My next speaker is councillor Mark Whittington. Councillor Whittington.
Thank you, Sir Chairman. I'm delighted to support the strategy and really pleased that it's come to full council. I think it's really important that every member here realises their corporate parenting responsibility and actually takes it seriously. But I've not just done corporate parenting, I've actually done practical, hands-on parenting of a child we adopted from Lincolnshire Social Services many years ago. The issues and the problems that looked-after children face are immense, all the stats, whatever stats you look at, they tend to do worse at school, they do have more chance. And I know we don't exclude any more in Lincolnshire, but nationally across the country, there's a great tendency for them to be excluded from education. So they face a whole variety of problems, problems that aren't of their, of their making. The vast majority have suffered some quite dreadful abuse, physical, psychological, sexual abuse at the hands of their parents, the people who should have been caring and nurturing and looking after them. Unfortunately, in experience of my own adopted son, when we traced the family story back, it was a generational thing that had been going on. Our son is now 22, 23, he's got a couple of daughters of his own, our, my grandchildren. And the most important thing I think we've done is for that looked-after child, we've broken the cycle. We've broken a generational cycle of abuse. The two lovely granddaughters are now cared, nurtured, and have got a chance of a future. Sorry, something's changed. So I'm really, and I actually really support everything that both councillor Parkin and councillor Fox have actually said. I too have issues with the term corporate parenting, because it sounds like spreadsheets and things that accounts as like MeDo or sort of technical stuff, and it kind of makes it sound really official. Councillor Parkin used the term shared parenting, and councillor Fox, collective parenting. What came with my own term is collective parental responsibility, which is similar. I think we have to take this really, 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 really seriously. We have to fight for these children as if they were our own children, as if they were our own grandchildren. Now, one of the most rewarding things I think I ever did was adopting. And I remember one incident with my own son, a couple of years ago, we went on a camping trip to Derbyshire, and he was 20, so we were having a pint in the pub and just talking about things. And when, sorry, when a 20-year-old tells you that he wasn't for you, his parents, his adoptive parents, he thought he'd be dead by the time he was a teenager, it kind of makes you realise that this really is important. Thank you, Sir Chairman.
Thank you councillor Whittington. Councillor Robert Parker. Councillor Parker.
Clearly from what you've heard from councillor Parkin, the Labour group support this lock, stock and barrel. There's an opportunity though for me just to ask a question. I'm a governor at a local school, and I'm sure that there's other governors here who are councillors as well. And I suppose my question is, looking at this separation, tripartite separation between councillors, universal targeted and specialist, I just wonder whether people like myself and other councillors who are governors have any greater responsibility as governors for looked-after children within the schools that their governors are. Now, I can imagine that we feel as though we might want to, but there's a whole issue of confidentiality, and I just put that forward for Trish to have a think about, and maybe Debbie and Robert, as to whether or not you feel as though that we do have a special, an extra responsibility beyond the, what you might call, universal.
Thank you councillor Parker. And finally, councillor Braylesford would like to come back?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, much of what I was going to say, I needn't have written it down, because I think most people have said it, yet delighted that the permanently excluded looked-after children now stands at zero. Much work has gone into achieving that, and congratulations to all those involved. I think what I should do first of all is, first of all, thank members of the corporate parenting panel. We're talking about names, it's actually, it's not the corporate parenting panel, it used to be the corporate parenting panel, it's now the corporate parenting subgroup. I'm at a loss to know why that was changed, but I'm happy to lose some of the names that we've got, but that's probably for another time. I'd also like to thank the officers that attend the corporate parenting groups, they're actually very, very dedicated, and I can say that you've heard lots of the areas of improvement during this debate, the panel or the subgroup. Can I just say that we're not complacent, we will not be complacent, and we will continue to challenge officers and partner agencies going forward. Yes, we should celebrate their success, and I think the Fab Awards is one of the things that we can point to. I think the other area, and it's not been mentioned in the debate, is the success, and it's a long-term goal is this, is the effect that the virtual school has had. We're looking to close the gap in educational attainment, and we are closing that gap. Whether we actually achieve to close it completely is a serious matter, but we've got a very, very dedicated team in there working to do that. But I think we must remember when we look at figures, and we do this as councillors all the time, Chairman, many of the children, before they come into care, the local authority, have not attended school for a significant period of time. So when they join, the numbers of looked-after children, they're significantly behind the curve. That is never actually mentioned. What is mentioned is looked-after children, education attainment, and we do actually do a pretty good job at closing that gap, but it does take time, but progress is being made. So I've nothing further to say, and I'll leave it to members. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Braylesford. Now, before we take the vote, does councillor Mrs Badwell wish to come back? Thank you. Right, we now need to vote on that. I think I can probably foretell the result, but we have to go through that. Can we have a show of hands? All those in favour, please? Thank you very much. Any against? And any abstentions? Clearly won. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item nine, recruitment of additional independent member on audit committee, and I call on councillor Mrs Rawlins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The item here is very straightforward. We currently on the audit committee have seven non-executive councillors, and we have one independent member, David Finch, who's input over the several years, he's actually been an independent member on the committee, has been absolutely invaluable. And I believe David will only be with us towards the end of this year, and then based on your acceptance of the proposals here, we will then interview for two other members. But I think that this sits well with the, what is now considered good practice and Sipford's recommendations in this area, and it also brings additional knowledge and experience to the committee, which is very desirable. And just to reiterate, this will be a politically neutral and independent position, so I just think it's an advisable step, and I look forward to you all approving the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have a second for that?
To second the motion and reserve my right to speak if necessary.
Thank you councillor Parker. We, yes, we have a speaker, councillor Aaron Spencer, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was actually just about to second the report myself, but I was a bit late on the button. But I just want to congratulate the Audit as Vice Chair for the work that we've done in the year. We're seeking to get reassurance through on several key areas, and I'm happy to support the report going forward.
Thank you very much. We've no additional speakers, so we need to vote on the two items there. The first one is the council agreed to the recruitment of an additional independent member to sit on the audit committee, and secondly, that's subject to the outcome of recommendation one, the council approved the amendments to the constitution as set out in appendix one of the report. Can we have a show of hands? All in favour, please? Any against? And any abstentions? Right, that is clearly a good decision. Item number 10, designation of monitoring officer and changes to officer delegations. A report by the chief executive has been circulated, and I now call on councillor Mrs Brockway.
Thank you, Chairman. These changes are to allow the smooth continuation of operational functions. We have the legal requirement for monitoring officer, plus the filling of the huge hole being left by Richard Wells. It's all very straightforward and here for your consideration. I move the paper, Chairman.
And do we have a second? Thank you councillor Mrs Newton. Right, we have no speakers on that, so we've got the two items there. That item one designates the chief legal officer as the council's monitoring officer, and number two amends section C of the delegations to chief executive and all chief officers in part three of the constitution, responsibility for functions, so as to transfer all the specific powers of the executive director for environment and economy to the chief executive. We need to vote? All those in favour, please? Thank you very much. Any against? And any abstentions? That is clearly moved. Item number 11, changes to the constitution, a report by the chief executive has been circulated, and I call on councillor Martin Hill. Councillor.
Thank you, Chairman. This has been circulated as an additional item on the agenda, and I move it as it stands.
Councillor Hill under second. Thank you councillor Newton. I have a speaker, councillor Robert Parker.
I've got a question, Martin, which gives you the opportunity to tell the council a bit more than there is in the paper. If we go to the resources comment on page three, it says that the proposals within this report can be met from within existing budgets of the council. That applies to this year, but I'm interested in knowing, I guess other people may be interested in knowing, what is likely to be the annual cost of these proposals? Because it seems as though we're being asked to, in a sense, agree an operational structure which is likely to be of medium to long-term in duration without knowing the full costs. So if you could share as much as you can with us, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you councillor Parker. Obviously, this is, new chief executive has come in, and this is part of a review of the officer structure, and as you, members are well aware, not only is Richard Wells leaving, as we do know because of their ages, there will be quite a few key officers who will also be departing the council with the best of terms, I have to add, with the best of terms in the next few years. So this layer, proposed layer of directors is very much in the remit of what councillors can do, because the national legislation is that councillors choose the chief exec and the director or employer, select them. Beyond that, the national legislation is quite clear that then it becomes officer decisions. The council will then have to agree, an executive I believe, will have to agree a structure below this, so it's difficult at this stage to say what the total cost of the whole situation will be. Suffice to say that there will be some additional posts, but indeed, there will probably be less posts and lower down the scale. And I would also remind the council that as part of our savings in 2011 onwards, we've actually reduced the senior management costs, and that is the directors and what used to be chief assistant directors and heads of service. That payroll bill has gone down by over a third, over 30%. So I can't give you a total cost of the changes that have come forward, but there will be some cost increase in this particular, these particular proposals.
Thank you councillor Hill. Right, we have no further speakers, so we need to vote on the changes. Item number one is to approve the new part seven of the constitution as set out in appendix A of the report, and number two authorises the monitoring officer to make consequential amendments to the constitution to ensure it is consistent with the approved structure. Right, all those in favour? Right, all those in favour, please show? Any against? And any abstentions? Thank you, that is clearly... Item number 12 is the audit committee annual report and I call on councillor Mrs Sue Rawlings.
Thank you once again, Mr Chairman. Well, I'm delighted to present the annual report from the audit committee, which the committee looked at in draft on the 25th of June and approved its contents. This is our first report as our current audit committee, because obviously our membership in terms of individuals changed after last May's election. The, my forward to the report, just reiterate, obviously, that we have looked at the annual governance statement and we've given specific attention to topics we consider to be particularly significant, including the financial system and as members are fully aware, that will include the payroll and the faster close down of the council's financial statements this year, which is dictated by central legislation and also our attention's been to look at the IT governance as well. In May, councillor Parker and myself met to look at what our views were on sharing information between the overview and scrutiny management board and the audit committee and I'm pleased to report we have meetings scheduled for October this year and March of next year to further those interactions. As I said, the payroll system has gone from low assurance in the past couple of years to limited and further to updates from our directors and officers and the work of the internal auditor and external auditors. We are hopeful that we will have substantial assurance in the autumn, in the next few months and we will wait and see the progress in that respect. Obviously, IT governance and cyber security are risks for this council just as for other councils and we have heard in terms of members IT, how technology moves on and we need to, as a council, deliver up-to-date technology and the efficiencies and other financial savings that that induces. In terms of financial reporting, I have referred to the faster close down and again, we are, we have had a close working relationship with the external auditors, KPMG, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank those individuals who have assisted the committee in that respect and we will look forward to looking forward now to working with Mazars, who are the new external auditors in the next session. And obviously, just to reiterate, the council has zero tolerance to fraud and our counter-fraud team are always monitoring the issues that affect the council. We have meetings with executive directors in, we have had in January, March, and that we will schedule to have another regular meeting where the directors and the chief executive will attend our meeting in January 2009 to update us on the issues in their particular departments and for the council overall. The governance of the council was assessed performing well during the year and the overall assurance status did indicate that eight per cent of our critical activities had increased from low to medium from 2016, 17 to 2017, 18, which is more reassuring. And obviously, we work very closely with internal, external audit and for 2018, 19, as detailed on page 117, we are looking to continue to build on our role and seek assurances on the areas listed there, which in addition to furthering our reviews of payroll and IT, we're obviously looking, going to look into the commercialism, transparency and accountability of that in terms of new working practices and ways we're going to have to perhaps do things differently as the, as time moves on and also looking at the strategic register and as has been alluded to previously in the council meeting, obviously looking at financial resilience and following the reports published by Northamptonshire County Council, which I say we all, we all look at what lessons have to be learned from that, those particular issues. And I have referred to our meetings with overview and scrutiny management chairman as well. Our Lincolnshire Audit Forum again is something that we are keen to attend and to that end, there is a meeting scheduled at Northcave Stephen with the Lincolnshire Audit Forum, which is always very informative in October. And our terms of reference, which are highlighted here, are also there to view, but they are based on Sipford recommendations. So I'll leave the report with you, ladies and gentlemen, and look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please? Thank you very much. I have a speaker, councillor Robert Parker. Councillor Parker.
We discussed the draft audit committee report, excuse me, we discussed... We do a lot of work and I want to congratulate the chair of the audit committee for trying to ensure that we are effective in the work we do. I think the point that does need raising is that when we look at page 113, some of the words are not the sort of words that we want. They are better than they used to be, but when we look at the view of the audit committee as the council does for the most part have adequate financial controls and governance arrangements in place that generally work well, it isn't exactly a ringing endorsement. It's a ringing endorsement of the opinion of the audit committee to an extent, but behind that, the control environment isn't quite as good as it ought to be. Now, that's not to say that there's anything about the audit work that goes on, it's the control environment behind that that has caused us some concerns. And financial control over the payroll system, for example, yes, it's got better, but it wasn't very good. We've managed for it to be improved from low to limited and we have some expectations of substantial assurance that we need to be moving towards and I feel it is work in progress towards having a better understanding on the audit committee of the control environment. If we also look at on page 115 about governance and risk, during the year, the council's risk management and internal control arrangements were assessed as performing adequately, some improvements necessary. So it's work in progress to be a better outcome. I'm sure that the chair would join with me in agreeing that we would like to see a better outcome reported as a result of the audit activity that produces, we hope, outstanding results. But I commend the report to everybody.
Thank you councillor Parker. I don't seem to have any more speakers, so we need to just take the vote that we're able to receive the audit committee annual report for 2018. All those in favour, please? Any against? And any abstentions? Thank you very much for that. Item number 13, motions on notice submitted in accordance with the council's constitution. Members are reminded of the rules of debate. These are set out below, rules 13.5 and 13.9. And I now call on councillor Sarah Parkin to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. It's my real hope today that we can leave party politics at the door and just do what is right, just as we've done with the corporate parenting strategy. I think there's so many issues that we need to discuss that transcend party boundaries. I'd like us to join over 150 other councils who have passed this motion, including 33 Conservative councils nationally, who have passed similar motions to right wrongs that were started in 1995 and that each successive government since then has failed to address. This is a plague on all of our houses. This is not a party political issue. I feel passing this motion today will nail this county council's colours fairly to the mast of the seven principles of public life: selflessness, integrity, objectivity, accountability, openness, honesty and leadership. The story behind this motion for me personally started with a letter sent to me at the end of August by a lady called Karen Paradowski. She's given me permission to share her name. She's a single mum who was born in the 1950s who currently works for the NHS. She's never had the capacity to save other than a small occupational pension because she was barred from saving into the pension scheme in an occupational capacity when she was younger. Due to changes to the state pension age that were started in 1995, she has lost £51,589. That's a huge loss and even though those changes were started in 1995, she didn't formally find out about them in 2014. Can you imagine being at the wrong end of that kind of policy if it was a bank? That a bank makes a policy change, they don't tell you about it for 20 years and that costs you over £50,000 of your savings. It wouldn't be tenable, it's an outrage. Women who have contacted, women have contacted me in their droves over the space of 24 hours since I first tweeted and Facebooked about this issue and I have never had such a strong public and popular response to anything. I cannot read all of their stories, but they've been deeply moving and I would really like the opportunity, Martin, if it's possible, to share some of them with you at a later date. But I do want to thank Karen, Lauren King, Sharon Jackson, Christine Swain, Heather Ellis, Linda Lomax, Theresa Quinn, Jane Bacon, Trish Alderson, Sue Dunx, Dulcie Doherty, Beth Johnson, Sharon Bannam and Hazel Bell for their first-hand experiences that they've shared with me over the last day or two and for their willingness for their names to be shared with you today. What I want to say draws on their experiences and my research, and as I say, this is about these people, this is about the over 50,000 women in Lincolnshire who this impacts. When the pension age for women was first increased in 1995, we were living in the pre-internet era, so there was no social media campaign. All commentators agreed that the governments at the time and all governments that followed failed to inform women of that change. Many women were only given two years' notice of a six-year increase to their pension age. Other organisations also failed them. Trade unions failed to engage with their members on the issue. Judges were still settling divorce agreements based on women receiving their pensions when they were 60 and they weren't going to. It wasn't, it has massive, massive impacts. Life was so very different for these 1950s women. There was a lack of childcare, so many of these women worked part-time, if they worked at all. As a result, availability of work pensions for them was poor. There was much more inequality in job prospects, in lack of loans, HP and mortgage provision. These women have borne the brunt of much social inequality but are expected to take the hit to equalise a system that has never been fair to them and was never fair to them when they entered the workplace. I have not heard a single one of these women oppose the concept of an equal pension age for men and women that's taken as a given, but these women are expected to bear all of the burden while never having had any of the benefits that my generation of younger women enjoy in regards to working career prospects. That is just not fair. Women who have worked hard all of their lives and given so much to their children, family members and carers are being left in poverty. The numbers of women claiming ESA at the age of, over the age of 60, as in going on to job seekers, has increased exponentially and I've got those figures with me if I need to share them later. Women who started their working lives based on them retiring at 60 are being humiliated by work assessments for benefits when they shouldn't have been working anyway. They fully expected to have retired and they paid into that pension scheme. Finally, I've made a commitment to a lady called Trish Alderson to share the story of her friend Rachel and I will just briefly summarise it. Rachel was born in 1954 and worked for the NHS as a phlebotomist for 21 years. She was married, both her husband and her worked and paid into the system. Rachel only discovered in 2014 that her pension had been deferred and instead of retiring, she had to carry on working. But at that same time, she was diagnosed as having cancer. Eventually, she carried on working for a good chunk of time, for a many, many, for a good chunk of time, because she wasn't able to claim benefits, she had to keep working. She was not, she was turned down for ESA and she had a very unsympathetic face-to-face assessment who turned her down. She was found fit for work and she returned, but she was so poorly, she couldn't actually take the blood from people because she was so poorly and she was hurting them. So she had to stop.
Councillor Parker, can I remind you, you have run out of time.
Thank you. I will just finish really quickly.
Just finish the last sentence, please.
In autumn 2015, she had to give up her work and her father, her hair and her husband then sold everything that they had to take one last holiday together and she died shortly after that. Please, please, don't let this woman's death go unnoticed. So much difference could have been made to her if she had been able to claim her state pension when she rightfully expected it at the age of 60. Please, please, for these women like Rachel and others like her, I beg you to support this motion.
Thank you councillor Parkin. And I call on councillor Christine Talbot. Mrs Talbot? Oh, sorry, thank you for reminding me. A second, please, for that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would welcome the opportunity to second councillor Parkin's motion. I'm speaking from personal experience because I am one of 50,000 women in Lincolnshire that are affected by what councillor Parkin's just been talking about. I worked for 30 years. I started work at 22 after finishing university and I worked as a teacher for 30 years and for much of that time, I expected to receive my pension at 60. I paid my national insurance contributions and part of the national insurance contribution is contribution to state pension. So contributing to NIC is not, it's not, your state pension is not a welfare benefit, it's a right because you've contributed to all your working life. I am actually luckier than most because working for 30 years in a professional job, I have got an occupational pension. But I was due to get my pension, my state pension, next year, 2019, and I won't be receiving it until 2025. And I only knew a few years before that that would happen, so I've been considerably inconvenienced by this change, even though I haven't been put in a situation of poverty, as councillor Parkin said. Can I reiterate that many women working in the 1950s worked in part-time jobs, there was traditional gender roles, women tended to stay at home, men went out to work, so many women did not qualify for an occupational pension. So to have this withdrawal of state pension to a later age is a double whammy. At the time, because I've done considerable research on this, men who were making this decision in 2015 and at the earlier date, men dominated as MPs. Even now, in 2018, we've had the Equal Pay Act going from 1974, but we all know that you've actually got a large proportion of men in top executive jobs and women in lesser paid jobs. So what we really have is we have women in equality in work and we also have women in equality in pensions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that and now I shall bring in councillor Christine Talbot and thank you for keeping me on the straight and narrow.
As ever, Mr Chairman. Well, I have to say, I'm going to find it really difficult having this conversation with you all this morning, but also in perhaps having to vote the way I have to vote. I turned 60, having been born on the 1st of August 1951, in 2011, and it wasn't until I queried or I had a notification as to whether I wanted to receive my pension at the age of 60 or whether I wished to defer the payment. And I chose to accept the pension at 60. at 60. I was then notified that I wouldn't be able to claim my pension, I was one of the lucky ones, until November of 2012. I was one of the lucky ones inasmuch as I only lost £7,500. But that's still £7,500. And the reason I was surprised I was getting a pension in the first place is because, as been mentioned by Julie, in 1973, when I got married, I opted out of the full stamp, as it was called, and I paid the married woman's stamp, which in fact, if I hadn't contributed more into my state pension, I wouldn't have qualified at all. But I've worked all my life, I left college at 18, and I stopped work in 1978, when I had my three children, 79, 81 and 84, and then I was widowed in 1985, and so I wasn't on the workforce then, so I didn't work from 78 till 87. But from 87 until my pension age, I'd been contributing a full stamp, because that was the choice I made. It's very difficult, if there are indeed, and I believe you, Sarah, that there are 50,000 women in this county who are affected by this legislation, and I think it's morally wrong, because it has been stated widely in the press that some of this pension fund has been raided for other things, and I think people who've paid in are entitled, because as Julie said, it's a right. If you've paid into something, you in fact, hopefully, get an income from it. As I said, I'm lucky, I don't know what I'd have done if I hadn't married the gentleman sitting over there in 1991, because I would have been in dire straits, but that's beside the point. I'm one of the lucky ones, as I said, but I'm going to find it really difficult, because I think it's important that we as individuals try and persuade... I know there are people involved in the WASP campaign who are trying to get the government to change their mind about the pension arrangements for these women, who by birth have now been disenfranchised in this country, and I think morally it is wrong.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Talbot. I shall now bring in councillor Kev Clark, please. Councillor Clark.
Thank you again, Chairman. Right, this motion is about fairness. Plans, dreams were made and then they were shattered. If this was in the workplace, there's no doubt it will be a breach of contract. The motion states clearly it isn't about the pension age, that's not in dispute, it's the way the group has been treated, and there's been no fault to the financial struggle that's going to be put on these people, and these are real people. It's not just numbers, it's people it's affected, and I would expect this council to support this motion and the people of Lincolnshire, especially females.
Thank you, councillor Clark. I now call on councillor Marianne Overton. Mrs Overton.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I've also received a considerable amount of correspondence on this. The main issue is quite clearly the lack of notice. To be able to say that you as a woman, because you're a woman, are going to receive £50,000 less than you thought you were, and nobody has bothered to write you a letter, to tell you nothing. People who've come to me have been caught out because they weren't expecting it. One lady who was on the phone recently said that she could have carried on working, but they worked out their finances and her husband could manage one year between her giving up her job and the pension starting. It was only after that year she realised there was no pension for her that year, or the next. So for people, and I am one of those, it's my personal contribution of close on £50,000 to the black hole, perhaps, to the government. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Overton. Now I'll call on councillor Sue Rawlings.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have to declare an interest, because I will be 59 in December, so I'm on one of the 50,000, but I have to take a contrary view to my female colleagues in this room. The state pension, it's a contributive scheme, it's not means-tested, if you contributed into it, you draw out of it. I mean, there are some people who have sad circumstances, and some people are more affluent, but it is not means-tested. I understand the hardship it's placed on some women of my age and younger, I was born in 1959. My colleagues are referred to the amount they paid in, and that was building up a fund for them. Unfortunately, in practice, it wasn't. The state pension has always been pay-as-you-go, and I recall going to an accountancy lecture 30 years ago, where the accountancy profession had tried to highlight to the government then that this was a problem. Successive governments have known this is going to happen, because we're going to have a huge unfillable deficit in the state pension. These are either contributions that have essentially, our children now are paying for us when we get a retirement pension. So you can fully understand why we've got to this impasse, and that is why the pension age has been raised across the board anyway. So from a government perspective, the only way they can bridge the gap is to push the retirement age out. Personally, I didn't receive any notice, I was aware of it, because clearly, you know, I've kept a breast of press notices and items in the press that have been out there for the last couple of years. So I think the notice issue is certainly not one that the government should draw much comfort from, because they should have informed people earlier. But having said that, the practicalities are that the country cannot afford the system as it stands now, and notice, albeit in some form, was given to people of my age, and I do appreciate that some people will be disadvantaged by the changes more than others. And I have to say that I'm not one of the people, there's another pension pot, huge pension pot waiting to pay my pension, because I have a derisal we want. So I will not, you know, I'm going to be one of the ones that suffers financially, but you can't say that I'm going to be down £50,000, £60,000, because that money is not in a fund, because it never existed.
Thank you. I now call on councillor Robert Parker. Councillor Parker.
We wouldn't be unusual in any way if we agreed to this motion. 150 councils already, of all political make-ups, have already supported this motion in lobbying the government. So I think the point that needs making, as councillor Parkin said, is it's not a party political issue, even if councillor Woolley did sound as though she was speaking on behalf of the government, because it isn't the government, it's a series of governments that have been making this decision, and the question of can't afford it actually comes back to, in a sense, some of the debates we have in this council chamber about what we can afford as a council. But despite however much we feel under pressure from national governments' lack of funding, I don't think that we would try to lobby the other councils to reduce the time at which people can retire as a local authority worker, from 60 to maybe 70, and do that without telling them clearly about it. So let's be clear about it. When you enter into an agreement, you expect that agreement to be adhered to, and this is clearly not what successive governments have not done. They have changed the rules, and they've changed the rules in a way that only affects one group of people, and that's women. Now, can you imagine, can any of you imagine this happening, so that the only people that were affected were men? Can you really think that that would ever be the case? It was just not possible, and for the reasons that we've heard, it's about men making decisions that have an impact on women, and we thought we had some form of equality, but this is an example. And I think it is about fairness, and it's about us standing side by side with the people that have been affected. And one of the things that I think I'm expected to do is to represent the views of the people in the area that I represent, and there must be 500 women in the area that I represent, and I'm speaking on behalf of them. And I think that it's reasonable to expect every councillor to think about who they represent, and whether those people have been disadvantaged, and what can we do to help them. The thing that we can do as individuals is to vote in favour of this motion, and then as a council, send a message to government. That's all we're asking.
Thank you, councillor Parker. I shall now call on councillor Jackie Brockway. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think this is a much more complex problem than is being stated here. I'm going to join the confessions and say I'm one of the women who loses the £48,000 or whatever, that isn't there, but I don't feel the same. For me, I think it's appropriate to have that loss, and just to be very clear, I have nobody else funding me. When you talk about my generation, it sounds as though you're talking more about my parents' generation. Women who were born in the 50s, went through the swinging 60s, were children then, and were in the 70s, and that was a period where all social areas, we're going to university, we're going to college, we're working, you know, we weren't just the little woman at home, which I feel is what's being wrongly painted here. Opportunity was there, there were university grants, and social mobility was considerable. And also, the warnings for this pension change was actually quite loud. We were in the television age and the telephone age, so it wasn't a case that there was no communication, it was in the press, and certainly, it was a topic for hot discussion. Many, many people knew that there were going to come these pension changes, and many people did start making provision then. If you're going to make provision for such a change, you do have to start very early on. Now, it is true that the government speeded that up, and it does, and that certainly has caused difficulty for some people. However, and I think, you know, that obviously does have to be recognised, I think there is some concern with what's being said in this motion as well. You're talking about 50,000 or so Lincolnshire women affected by this legislation. Well, I would want to know on what evidence you base that. Have you actually done a piece of work to find out how many? Councillor Parker says there must be 500 in his division. Well, that would make about 8,000 odd men in your division. So, you know, the figures, if you're going to quote the figures, we do need to have them based on some evidence. I think also, there's a bigger picture here, and this really does trouble me within the context of this motion, which I feel is not complete. There is the issue of equality. We know, and Professor Ward might contradict me on this, my understanding is that men in this country still have a slightly shorter lifespan, and yet we have long expected them to work longer. Now, equality is something that brings the good and the bad, and when you move towards equality, some people are going to suffer. And nobody wants those people to suffer, and I am not saying that that's okay, because it's not, we must do what we can to help. But I don't believe that that is via this motion. You are right that it's not party political, but it has to be accurate, and it has to take into consideration the whole picture. If I go and get my whatever, £48,000, £49,000 back, that means that my daughter's generation will get less. We've had it very nice, thank you very much, with our free universities and our excellent healthcare, and the next generation is going to struggle enormously. I'm sorry, I do apologise. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. I'm conscious of the time, and we don't want to be here too long. I was going to ask councillor Alison Austin, but she's moved out of the room, so I'll move on to councillor Chris Brewis. Councillor Brewis.
Thank you, Chairman. I think that councillor Mrs Sue Rawlings and Jackie Brockway have said largely what I was going to say, but let's be in no doubt at all, it hasn't been put clearly enough that within this room, local authority pensions are funded. That's why we have a pensions committee. When national pensions were introduced in 1911, or whenever it was, they are not. Today's contributions pay for today's pensions. And just to remind you, when pensions were introduced, between a quarter and a third of the people died before they reached pensional age. The fact is that people believe they have a right to 30 years of funded retirement. I'm sorry, they don't. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brewis. I move on to councillor Aaron Spencer. Councillor Spencer.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this motion, I was just going to vote against it, but most of what I've thought has already been said, but I just wanted to highlight the point that I think it's quite wrong to demonise men for making this decision back in there, and that it was stated that men made these decisions, and they were the predominant MPs at the time, and I would just like to remind everyone in the council that actually the pressure that was put on members of parliament at the time when this decision pushed towards equality actually came from women. So this decision was made due to the fact that pressure from feminists was being put on members of parliament. So it wasn't men making the decision, it was actually social pressure that made that, and to demonise men for this is quite frankly unreasonable, and I won't be supporting this proposal.
I call on councillor Colin Davie. Councillor Davie.
Thanks, Sir Chairman. A lot has been said already, I just wanted to remind people, of course, we have to think about the next generation and the burdens that are going to be placed on them. It's our Aaron Spencer's generation who are really going to have to find different ways of funding their old age and their retirement, so it is difficult. But I would say this, having been contacted by a lot of my residents, I serve a very elderly population and increasingly elderly, there are concerns. I think for me, the main issue regarding this is the implementation of the change. As we all know, equalisation of the state pension age has been welcomed across the whole political arena. There is no doubt that that's the right thing to do. However, the 1995 Act and the pensions committee of the time in the House of Commons made it clear there should be a 15-year notice period for change to the state pension age. The 2011 Act accelerated that, and some women ended up with only five years' notice of substantial changes to their pension. So this has been badly handled by central government. But at the end of the day, we have to come down to the conclusion that, you know, doing the change is right. I think the disadvantage that has been caused by the non-notification, which has been picked up by other people in this chamber, is the one issue that really upsets people. People don't mind planning for their future, they don't mind paying for their future, just as long as they're given proper notice by government of what they are required to do. And I think that is the issue for me. I mean, I can't vote for the motion, because I think it's too wide and everything, and I think, you know, for me, the 1953 women are the ones who've really taken the hit in terms of the cliff edge. The tapering wasn't put in place for that small section of women in that group, and I think that should have been done. So I can't support the motion, I have sympathy with a lot of it, but I can't support it. So I think that as a local council, we are not going to change the minds of Treasury. Treasury are very clear about what they want to do. Yes, it's bringing 5.1 billion extra in revenue per year, but now, in a time of falling unemployment, we have an increase of women over 60 of 115% claiming unemployment benefits, and we have a 413% increase of women over 60 claiming employment support benefits. So you'll have to neutralise that act. Can't support the motion, but I wanted to make the point that there are issues with the way changes are being brought in by government.
Thank you, councillor Davie. And I now can bring in councillor Alison Austin. Mrs Austin, you've timed it right.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I'm way, way over the age, so... But I was lucky to actually be married to someone who had a good pension, and I think I'll perhaps just leave it at that now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have now councillor Barry Young. Councillor Young.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to spend a little time correcting a number of the statements that have been made. It is totally untrue that nobody got any notification. They did. And when I say they did, I'm not just talking about what's been mentioned already in the way of newspaper advertisements, something on the telly or whatever. Letters were sent out, not as many as should have been, but to imply that nobody had any notice is totally untrue. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the background, and it's very easy for the people over there to say, let's keep politics out of this, but let's remember that just prior to the 2011 Act, there was a change of government. prior to the twenty-eleven Act, there was a change of government, and the former Chief Secretary of the Treasury, Liam Byrne, left behind the infamous note, "I'm afraid there is no money." And it was therefore incumbent upon the incoming government to find ways of saving money, and I'm afraid that one of the routes they chose was to play around with pensions. I'm very pleased that a number of speakers have said that national insurance contributions do not go into a funded scheme, they never have. It's always been a pay-as-you-go scheme, and to try and calculate how much you've paid by way of contributions and then say you've lost it is just nonsense. The impact of those born in the fifties actually isn't as dramatic as implied in the motion. The changes in the Pensions Act twenty-eleven affected around five million people in Great Britain, two point six million women, and two point three million men born between nineteen fifty-three and the fifth of April nineteen sixty. And it's this number, you'll have to wait longer before they reach state pension age. Of this number, an estimated four point five million people in Great Britain will have their state pension raised by, state pension age raised by less than a year. An estimated half a million women born between sixth April fifty-three and fifth April fifty-five will have their state pension age raised by slightly more than a year. And about three hundred thousand women born between sixth December fifty-three and fifth October fifty-four will have their state pension age raised by eighteen months. Relative to the nineteen ninety-five Act timetable, this is now the longest potential rise and represents a significant concession. The Minister for Pensions this year has made it absolutely clear that it will not be revisiting the state pension arrangements for women affected by the ninety-five or twenty-eleven Acts. It carried out an extensive analysis of the impacts of bringing forward the rise to sixty-six when legislating for the changes, and members who are really interested can find the impact assessment at Gov UK. Decision to amend the timetable originally set out in the bill to cap the maximum increase at eighteen months was informed by this analysis.
Councillor Young, if I can thank you, I did say I'd probably give you a few seconds extra. Our final speaker is councillor Martin Hill, and have you a second?
And I recommend anybody reads the House of Commons library issue on this, and as councillor, and I think, looking at the motion, the issue seems to be, as I take this away from the motion, it's not about the fact that pensions were going to be equalised, it was about the fact that in twenty eleven, there was a change. Of course, as has come out, it's not everybody's had their, everybody, and I have to say, in terms of, the timescale was increased to, the criteria has increased to sixty-six as part of that bill. If I was declaring interest, I have to say, my wife has actually caught it exactly just at the wrong time. She will now have to work, if she wants to draw a pension, she will have, or not, she will have to wait till she's now sixty-six till she draws her pension. I think it's a bit emotive to say, oh, you've lost fifty thousand pounds. No, the effect of all this is that some people, including most of us, all of us in the fifties, will have to work longer if we want to, we can all choose to start working tomorrow if we want, but if we, it means until, what's the criteria is when you can get the pension. So it's not so much a matter of losing money, it's a matter of if you want to protect your future financially, you have to work a little bit longer. And as councillor Young said, there was a concession given about eighteen, nobody will suffer more than eighteen months, so I think people talk about four years and the rest of it are not correct. And I think I should also point out as part of that, when I was young, the pension was given to couples, and the head of the household, usually the man, was given it, and then if he was a nice man, he would share it with his other half or vice versa. Of course, now pensions have been individualised, the pension amount has increased substantially, is now currently triple lock pension, so it's protected for the future. So compared to previous times when people were younger and they were thinking about they may be lucky enough to retire at sixty, what they'll get when that pension finally arrives will be quite substantial. And of course, the other factor which hasn't been mentioned is people, all of us are living much longer. And one of the reasons why the governments in the past have actually had to do this is because instead of people living five or six years after retirement, now it's probably expected at least twenty years is the average. And of course, the state, and as councillor Brockway said, and in fact, working people, people younger than us, will have to pay for that in the future. So although I, I think everybody agrees the way the twenty-eleven was brought in, it wasn't a sexist thing because everybody suffered, we all suddenly realised, it had all been pushed forward. So I would not support the motion, although I think we all agree the way it was implemented could have been better handled at the time. So I will not be supporting the amendment. And the reality is, the concessions that the government gave back in twenty-eleven, or I think it was afterwards, cost one point one billion, so there isn't a cost put to this, whatever the proposal might be, but this will be billions of pounds which will not then be available for social care, for example, or stuff that we'd want to do. So I think, although great sympathy for what has been said, I think practically, we've got to be realistic here and not support this motion.
Thank you councillor Hill. And finally, I will ask councillor Parkin if she would like to quickly sum up, if I may ask her. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it is about reality versus perception here, and I don't think we can pretend, and if you'd heard the stories of these women, you wouldn't pretend, you wouldn't be able to think that this is anything other than dreadful and awful. Councillor Hill, a lot of these women are trying to find work, have tried to find work. When they found about those changes, they did say, they weren't able to, they weren't employable, they were deemed out of the labour market. That is not reality, that is a perception. The perception that somehow we just had to do it, this has been the harshest and the steepest increase in the whole of Europe. These women have been given the shortest lead in time, as other countries have done this. They haven't done it this way, they've done it in a more staged, in a more gentle way. Councillor Rollins, in practice, this has left women in poverty by shifting these goalposts. Not one of these women, and I've said it again, is arguing against the equalisation of pensions. What they're saying is the way they were dealt, the way they were treated was wrong. And the practicality is that there's a small quota of those women, I recognise it won't impact the women in the room in the same way as it will impact them, but for some of those women, the impacts on them have been quite dreadful. The experiences of us as women in this chamber cannot be relied upon as a barometer of what those women experienced, because they have very different lifestyles, very different opportunities, very different pathways. There's no doubt the advertising of it was poor, it was advertised in the Financial Times. I'm not entirely sure that was the correct reading material for it to be put into. Our figures councillor Brockway are from this council, they're from David Hare himself, and from my team here who did some research for us this week. We are not asking for a change in this. What we're saying is that there should be transitional arrangements for women who have been less struggling because of it, no more nor less, no less than that. If you haven't been impacted, if you feel that you can take the hit, that's great, because if those transitional arrangements do come into place, I'm sure the government will give you an opt-out. But because you can cope, do not assume, do not make the judgement call that the other women of your generation can make the same choice, because the women who have emailed me and messaged me, they can't. And some women have died in the process of trying to sort out this mess. Remember Rachel, she sold all of her wedding presents, all of her possessions, to be able to enjoy a last holiday with her husband. That's the reality for some women. The pressure for change did not come from these women. It did not come from these women. The pressure for change was a financial imperative, and it's one that we can't argue against, we wouldn't try to argue against.
The issue is whether some people are required to work longer. And if they, that's the key issue. The key issue to be entitled to the state pension, the effect of this change is some people, and women included of course, and men, are going to have to work longer before they can be entitled to the state pension, that's the issue.
Sorry, can I just clarify, that isn't the issue. We are not suggesting for a moment that, and the women themselves are not complaining about the fact that they have to work longer. What these women are complaining about was that they were not notified and they were not able to make transitional arrangements. That is the issue. And therefore, for women who did not receive that notification and who have been unfairly penalised, there should be a system in place that if they feel that struggle, if they need it, they should be able to go for help. That's what the transitional arrangements are, and that's what they would be. I'd just like to close by saying, just a couple more points. Councillor Young, there is no doubt at all that letters were not sent out. There is absolutely no question that some people were notified, some people were able to make changes, but a good number were not. Now, unfortunately for the campaigners, we cannot quantify the amount or the proportion of that, because...
Because what has just been said is not true. And I invite members to read the House of Commons library briefing paper on the subject, which makes it clear that letters were sent out.
Letters were sent out, but not to all of the women involved. Karen herself did not receive a letter until two thousand and fourteen. She did not receive the letter until two thousand and fourteen, she did not. Councillor Keely still hasn't received her letter, so... No, I didn't say no letters were sent out, I was saying that some people, some people have had them, some people haven't. And do you know what? I think what we're doing is really splitting hairs over what is the absolute thrust of this, that there are women, Lincolnshire women, who have contacted me in their droves who are really struggling on this. Colin, I enjoyed your comments, thank you very much. I think it's a real shame that...
Councillor Parkin, I think we have councillor Mrs Talbot, as a point of information, is it correct?
I do, most certainly, Mr Chairman. There seems to be a consensus of agreement in this chamber that it's about the notification. And I'm just wondering whether the motion as put as it's been put, and not many people are agreeing with the actual wording of it, whether the wording could be changed by the proposer, because I think, in my own mind, I think the crux of the matter is, the sympathy is with the motion, but not as it's worded, and it's to do with, had it been a better frame of wording, that it's the notification that seems to be causing the jam in this particular issue.
Just thank you councillor Talbot, and thank you for your comments earlier. In terms of, I think it's a shame you can't support the motion, because I think you really understand it and you've really crystallised the nub of the issue. If we return to the motion and the actual wording, I think the wording is very, very clear, because what it is saying, this council calls upon the government to reconsider, even at this stage, transitional state pension arrangements for women born on or after the sixth of April nineteen fifty, which we know is the date, who have unfairly borne the burden of the increase of the state pension age with lack of appropriate notification. The motion itself is very, very clear that this is about the notification and the hardship that that has left women in. Thank you.
I've got councillor Key has come up, is it some information councillor Key?
Instead of pressing a button, I would just like to say that, obviously being, well, fairly new here, been here a few months, I was a little bit surprised that people can just jump up without actually saying what they wanted to do. It's had a point of information, a point of order. And I never heard that when councillor Young got up while councillor Parkin was speaking, and I think that was wrong. And I would like to say on this one, when we go to the vote, is there a chance of a recorded vote?
Right, right, members, let's return to a little bit of order. I've got councillor Robert Parker here.
It's twenty-five to two, so...
Yes.
So I'm asking members of the Conservative group to stand to make it fifteen, so they can have a recorded vote.
Those that wish to have a recorded vote, will you please stand? And it looks like we don't have the fifteen required, so thank you for those that did Sorry, we now need to carry on with the vote on this particular motion. We've had all the speakers, I think it's probably a subject that may not go away, not in this council but in other councils. So I would like to ask those all in favour to show. Thank you. All those against? And all those abstaining? Thank you. Yes, we can have councillor Mrs Overton's vote recorded?
And the Labour Group.
And the Labour Group, that's all the Labour Group, is that? And councillor Key, and Mrs Newton, councillor Cook. Okay, that can be arranged. Okay, well, that has concluded the meeting. I would ask members to collect their pigeon posts, check their posts, obviously, from the pigeonholes after this meeting. I declare the meeting open and over, and we can have a word with our guest retiree. Thank you, members.
Don't forget the stamp.
I know, I usually fall over the things.
We need to issue our health and safety advice.